Today, and we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilwoman Olivia Valentine. Please bow your head. Good Lord Heavenly Father, please guide us today in all the decisions we make as a city council to protect our residents, to help those that are in need, and to continue the great progress that we have as a city. Enlighten us with that guidance that only you could provide us to make the best decisions possible. I ask this in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, Heavenly Father, and our mighty Creator. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand, place your hand over your, your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
At the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, and to the public for which we stand, one nation under God, in the name of the Lord, justice for all.
At this time, Councilmember Hader Awad has a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. My speakers work, there you go. So, yeah, I know this has been brought up many times, and the whole idea about the item here is to kind of address an issue that we know is very difficult, one, to resolve, and two, to really make this a community initiative effort to address homelessness here in the city of Hawthorne. And this group has come to the city of Hawthorne to drink public comment, and so the best way for them to practice their First Amendment right, and at the same time, to kind of give not only the entire city, but also our city staff and our police department, the idea of it's the council that makes the deciding decisions. And it's, and I don't want to have like City Hall or the employees being, you know, bashed or kind of hit over their head when all they're doing is taking, really giving them direction. So in a sense, it's, it's having this open dialogue on this issue. How can we come to the table? How can we come to the middle with all of us together? But at the same time, shielding staff and everyone else because since we are the deciding body, it's us that are going to have to relay our messaging out to the public. So that's why I brought them up to the, giving them their chance to speak, they wanted to, and this way kind of helps position where the city stands on certain issues, us as a, as a, as a council together, and it allows them to practice their First Amendment right. And hopefully this will kind of get us on the right track, working together, getting this moving forward. And with that, I think it'll be with Street Watch. Are they there or?
Yes.
Hi, um, we are. Hi. Is it possible that we can screenshot our presentation?
Let's see.
Hello?
Eric Lee, is that, um, is the presentation being uploaded from our side or?
So we have the presentation, and I believe Eric Chavez is going to be controlling it.
Um, thank you so much. Just let us know when we should get started.
Oh, it's on the screen there.
On the screen.
Oh, that's unfortunate, our slides are different, but we should be fine.
Yeah, we, it'll be okay. And I believe you've all been provided with like a PDF of our slides and a packet additional information, so you know, you can always refer back to that as well if anything, seems a little off with the slides. And are we okay to get started or we're all good?
Yeah.
Great. Uh, well, thank you so much to Councilman Awad, as well as the whole council for inviting us to be here today. I know we've maybe encountered each other through sort of the call-in portion of City Hall meetings, but I'm really excited for us to get to all be in dialogue today. My name is Maggie Clark, and I've been organizing with Street Watch for about two years. I'm a Hawthorne resident, and I've lived here, I think, just over four years. I'm going to pass it off to Jay.
Hi, my name is Jay, my pronouns are she/her's. I grew up in Gardena, so I'm familiar with the South Bay. I currently live in South Los Angeles, and I have been organizing with Street Watch and a lot of others to bring you this presentation today. I'm going to go ahead and pass it off to G. G, are you there?
Oh, sorry, I think you, I think you were cutting out.
Hello.
G, can you hear us okay now?
Yes.
Sorry, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Good, okay, well, if it's okay with G, I'm just gonna keep going with a little bit of the introduction, and maybe they can join us when their reaction's a little bit more stable, if that's all right. Um, so I thought I could let you know a little bit about Street Watch South Bay. And we're part of Street Watch LA, which is an organization that's been working in the LA County area to advocate for and defend the rights of our unhoused neighbors for about two years. South Bay is their newest local, and we're really excited to start organizing together here where we all live. So we're just a sort of non-hierarchical network of South Bay residents organizing with our unhoused neighbors to help ensuring, ensure the well-being of everybody in the South Bay. So to that end, we provide mutual aid, we monitor sweeps, which is what we're going to be talking about today. And of course, we're going to advocate with city officials like Hawthorne City Council. And again, I just want to sort of reframe this as a dialogue, even though we'll be presenting to you all. I know that different people on the council and in City Hall have expressed, you know, questions about some of this stuff, so I'm hoping we can address some of that tonight as well. And if G's available, I'm gonna leave it to them, otherwise Jay, I think you're up next.
Can y'all hear me all right?
Oh.
All right, um. This, um. Sorry, um.
I can take it, G. So today we are here to talk about sweeps and how the practices negatively affect all South Bay residents, particularly our unhoused, our unhoused neighbors. Sweeps are the forced removal of unhoused people from where they are sheltering under the threat of fines and arrests. In the past month, there have been at least four documented sweeps that we have, that we have known of. And our presentation will cover why we must stop sweeps.
And if you wouldn't mind advancing to the next slide, oh, perfect, you already did it, you're so on top of it. Whoever, I'm sorry I didn't catch your name, but you're doing an amazing job with the slides. Um, so this slide, uh, it's missing its heading, but it features some of the municipal codes that are typically used when citations are being issued in Hawthorne to unhoused folks. Um, I'm not going to read them out to you because, you know, hopefully all of you as city officials are pretty already, I just want to acknowledge that, you know, while at first glance, these seem pretty basic, our municipal codes are intended to protect everybody living in Hawthorne. And when codes like these are applied without compassion or without a strong understanding of the context that sort of underlie homelessness in our area, it really just creates a situation that criminalizes, dehumanizes, and just leads to harassment of our neighbors who live on the street. And this in turn contributes to a cycle of trauma that exacerbates the root causes of homelessness rather than working towards sustainable solutions that can actually uplift everybody who lives in our city. So I'm hoping this will work. But if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide, we have a short video that sort of features the perspectives of some of the unhoused folks we've been organizing with here in Hawthorne about their experiences of sweeps.
Unfortunately, the video does not work, it's not working for our presentation for today.
Oh, that's okay, we can move forward. I'll just let everybody know that if you want, you can watch this on the Street Watch Instagram, which is I think at Street Watch LA, it has about over 20,000 views at this point, so I would definitely recommend checking it out. Um, but I can tell you that it speaks to some of the experiences of our unhoused neighbors in terms of how sweeps kind of uproot and destabilize their lives, how it makes it difficult for them to maintain contact with each other, as well as with vital services that they need to survive. And the types of services that the city of Hawthorne, I think, wants to be able to provide, but are being stymied by this practice that makes it difficult for service providers to find and interact with unhoused folks. It pushes them into just sort of increasingly difficult to access spaces, as well as sort of breaking those bonds, that's, that's the gist of the video, although I'd encourage you to check it out.
All right, um, so we are in an unprecedented crisis. Homelessness is not a reflection of the individual choices, mistakes, or conditions. It is a result of a housing market that is leaving people behind. The amount of unhoused people has doubled since Measure H was passed in 2016. According to the South Bay Coalition to End Homelessness, between the year 2019 and 2020, the city of Hawthorne experienced an increase of 78% of people living in their vehicles, an increase of 118% of people living on the street, and 90% overall homelessness. You may advance to the next slide.
Hey, G was going to cover this one, I'm gonna go ahead and take it unless they are able to.
Oh, hi, can y'all hear me?
Yeah, G, are you here? Do you want to take slide five?
Oh, um, Jay already went over it, but I can go over COVID-19 evictions and job loss.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry, I'm off on my notes, counting is a struggle for me.
All right, so next slide, please. So unemployment and eviction from the pandemic are making the housing crisis so much worse, especially in a city that has no rent control. It's easier than ever before to become unhoused. Federal and state governments are not stepping up to provide adequate tenant protections and rent forgiveness. Therefore, Hawthorne will have to prepare for a huge increase in unhoused couples, families, and individuals. One way to conserve budget and protect the health of the residents of Hawthorne is to stop sweeps. Next slide.
I said, oh, go for it.
Yeah, I think I got it. So sweeping people during this time is actually against CDC regulations. It's a health risk to the community to push unhoused people out of our shelter in place during a global pandemic. It increases the risk of spreading COVID. Even outside the pandemic, sweeps disconnect unhoused people from their community and make it difficult for service coordinators like Jesse Ramirez to follow through with necessary resources. Sweeps especially harm elderly unhoused people and unhoused people who are disabled because they are forced, because they force people to pack their items and move quickly or face losing their belongings. Oftentimes, people's medications and identifications are thrown away or destroyed during sweeps. I can advance to the next slide.
Something that we'd like to acknowledge is that in the past two years, there have been courts, courts have ruled ordinances like these unconstitutional, and several cities have been sued for having them. In 2018, Marvin B. Boyes ruled sweeps as unconstitutional and cruel and unusual punishment. This year, Garcia versus the City of LA preliminary injunction ruled that seizing bulky items belonging to unhoused people is unconstitutional as a form of unlawful search and seizure. In general, it's unjust for a city to have laws against sleeping outside if there's nowhere for the unhoused to go. Hawthorne currently has no sustainable and long-term housing options for these constituents. Yet, cities across the country are stopping enforcement of laws regarding parks and sidewalks. The city of LA is only authorized to do sweeps near specific shelters. Redondo Beach is no longer forcing, enforcing similar ordinances. Vens no longer does comprehensive sweeps, and Modesto is seizing similar enforcement, enforcement of ordinances until they build shelter. Next slide.
Thank you. Um, so I kind of want to touch a little bit more on that budgetary piece. Of course, you know, hopefully it's clear from this that sweeps take it harder for people to get back into housing because it breaks these connections that they have to the types of services that could allow them to be uplifted to a place where they could afford to live in this incredibly expensive city. But I also want to touch on that sweeps further the narrative that house, that unhoused folks are a nuisance or dangerous, when in fact they are much more likely to be victims of crimes than perpetrators. Nobody wants to be unhoused. It's more ethical and more cost-effective to help people be lifted out of homelessness rather than constantly punishing them for just existing as poor people. Not to mention that this is wasteful of our city's funds. And if you wouldn't mind moving to the next slide.
So the problem here isn't that there isn't enough housing. The issue in Hawthorne is that we do not have enough rent protections, community services, or jobs that pay a living rate, a living wage. Permanent affordable housing is the foundation needed to solve other issues. And if you're interested, you can learn more about these with our partner, Services Not Sweeps. Maggie?
I was drinking some water. Um, I want to touch on something that we have a lot more information about in the packet that we've shared, so I really encourage you to check that out. There's also tons of resources about trauma-informed care online. And this is something we would advocate for as a basic framework around which to start developing services and new ways of interacting with our unhoused neighbors. This framework acknowledges and centers the ties between homelessness and individual generational and structural trauma. So a trauma-informed care approach provides unhoused people with basic human needs, including things like food, water, a bathroom, somewhere to sleep, and doesn't criminalize people for trying to meet these basic needs outside when they have no access to anywhere else to meet the needs of literally just being a living human being. Trauma-informed care also takes into account things like disability status, historical oppression, and the mental health status of everyone involved. And it allows people to stay with their pets and/or partner while entering housing or shelters. And I know that in previous conversations we've had, or I've listened to in the council, because we've never been in conversation before, there has been a lot of talk about people who are resistant to services. I would love to talk about that more after the presentation if you have any questions. But I'll just cite this as an example of why somebody might be resistant to what we perceive as a service, right? That, um, though it seems like maybe we're offering them something, asking somebody to be parted from their family or from their partner or from their pets so that they can stay in a shelter for a couple of days is actually a pretty unreasonable ask. Trauma-informed care endeavors to make it so providers aren't just re-traumatizing people who are trying to receive services. So again, check your packet for more about that. Oh, and if you wouldn't mind moving to the next slide, I think G's up next.
Something that we'd really like to acknowledge is how policing ends up exasperating the trauma of homelessness. Police presence and action in any space are acts of intimidation because of the weapons they openly carry and the legacy of violence they have established. Sweeps show that the council is comfortable with police ensuring that our unhoused neighbors are out of sight and out of mind. The police displace and physically harass our neighbors, ultimately physically or mentally harming these individuals and making the transition to being housed that much harder. Police presence doesn't solve the problem. Police threaten the safety of our unhoused neighbors. Rather than policing the presence of unhoused neighbors, unhoused people, and criminalizing them for their circumstances, we suggest that first responders should be unarmed and specialize in social services, mental health, and escalation to appropriately address the potential needs of our unhoused neighbors. These first responders should have no affiliation to any of the police department and come from our communities. To effectively protect our unhoused neighbors and unhomlessness, reallocating funds from the police is a necessary step. We know criminalizing and displacing our neighbors only worsen their circumstances. When the lives of our most vulnerable residents are at risk, the council and police prioritize property over community. By taking care of our marginalized neighbors, we reduce the need for police presence. Criminalizing and displacing our neighbors does not work. Rather, we should direct that money and attention to mental health and addiction resources, rental protection, safe and affordable housing, family counseling, and fresh affordable food, to name a few. The city of Hawthorne's budget should reflect the care our neighbors require to house them. Um, you can move to the next slide now.
Sorry to interrupt, but you're at two minutes.
Great, thank you. Um, so we're excited to take some questions from the council. If you have any, we certainly have some for you that we could ask. But before we do that, I have a link to the YouTube video, the video we made. I'm wondering if I can share it with you all, and maybe somebody could, who has screen sharing, could share it with us?
It was also forwarded to Eric Lee.
So Eric Chavez, can you weigh in on whether the, you know, what the technical issue you think is? And if there's an opportunity for the, the screen sharing that they're suggesting to actually solve this issue?
Uh, not at the moment, we can't do the screen sharing, but um, if you want to say the website, I'm pretty sure everyone could hear it. The video just was in delay, about three second audio delay, so it wasn't looking good.
All right, well, I mean, the YouTube, the website we're listening is YouTube. Again, I'm happy to share the link if someone on the council would maybe like to, or maybe someone in the clerk's office, you know, wants to find a way to disseminate it that way. But you can also find it on Instagram, at Street Watch's Instagram, which is at Street Watch LA, one word. I think it's just the most recent post on their page, so it should be pretty easy to find.
To the chair.
Yes.
Actually, that is the, the link is on our flyers, right here on the bottom. The YouTube. It's enough, enough presentation. So, so we have that YouTube video ready, so we can watch it later, thank you.
Sure, I'm curious what questions you all have for us.
All right, any questions? All right, thank you so much for your presentation.
Oh, wait, actually, we have one or two questions for y'all if you don't mind.
Oh, Mr., Mr. City?
Their presentation's done, so if you, so they've, they've met their limit, but if they have questions for you, that's outside the presentation, that's up to you.
Well, the city council is the one that's usually presents, but if you can want to make some final comments or anything, that's fine. To close out the, your presentation, that's, go ahead. Go ahead.
I was really, oh, sorry.
No, please go ahead, G.
Yeah, ask your questions.
I, one, one particular question in mind, I'm wondering what specific measurable steps does the council, does the council plan to do in Hawthorne beyond Section 8 housing, vouchers, and other temporary housing in Hawthorne? If y'all had any plans for that?
Does anybody want to answer that? This is a very complicated issue, and we're looking at a lot of different possibilities, but it's a very, very comprehensive and difficult issue. So we're looking at a lot of different things, but.
Well, I would remind you that you're lucky to live in a community that according to the last homeless count has almost 300 experts in homelessness living on our street. And I would really encourage you to consider reaching out to some of them about the types of services and resources that would be most beneficial.
Well, that may be a good start.
I think just to wrap this up, we would like to ask the council to vote to end sweeps in Hawthorne.
Of course, we realize that won't happen at this meeting, but that's our ask, is that you move forward on finding other solutions that don't traumatize and violate our neighbors. But that's our ask, is that you move forward on finding other solutions that don't traumatize and violate our neighbors.
Alright. We really appreciate your presentation uh, for coming and uh, sharing some of your ideas. So uh, uh, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the three of you for presenting. Mr. City Clerk.
Thank you, everyone. If there's no final comments, then we'll end the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please read the guidelines for oral communications.
During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer your remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation. So we have quite a few uh, comments via email as well as comments uh, via phone calls. So um, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Um, the first one is gonna be Mr. Uh, Matt Zaro.
Hello?
Alright, Mr. Zaro, you're on.
Here at City Council, my name is Matt Zaro. I lived in Hawthorne for over five years, and I am a member of Street Watch L A. I want to start by thanking Councilmember Hidar Awad for inviting Street Watch L A South Bay to present tonight. But his openness to hear from our community members be an example to the whole council. While Street Watch is calling for you to end sweeps tonight, I'm personally calling for something much more. What I really want to see from my city is a shift in attitude and strategy towards the unhoused. One of the things that has become clear to me is that not a one of you, not a council member, mayor, or leadership in the city knows any people who are living on the streets of our city. I'm guessing you have never gone and talked with them, or invited them to a meeting, or to serve on one of your beloved committees. The city didn't even want to hear our voices tonight. Eric Lee spent more time trying to prevent us from showing our presentation and from showing our video than preparing for this meeting. And that's probably why our video wasn't able to play, because you guys can't manage a YouTube clip, okay? If you took the time to get to know people, you wouldn't need to be convinced why sweeps are bad. My experience getting to know some of the unhoused people in my neighborhood has had a profound impact on me. I have learned about the amazing struggle being unhoused is, how much work and effort it takes to do simple things when you have no security. To get to know my unhoused neighbors, I have also come to learn how amazing some of them are. I'm not sure you have met, I'm not sure I've met decent folk anywhere else in my life that are as decent as the people I've met on the side of the tracks, certainly more decent than the people in this meeting. Many of these people have become my friends. Building on these friendships has changed the nature of my work. I'm no longer working towards just how universal housing, because there are, uh, because I no longer want people living on my streets. But I'm also working towards universal housing, so my friends Mike and Don, who you guys have ignored and let Mike die on the, dying, leaving him dying on the streets. I'm fighting for him, so he doesn't have to do that anymore. I'm not calling on Hawthorne just to provide basic services like bathroom showers and sanitation to its growing unhoused population because it's a moral thing to do. I'm also fighting for some place for Chris and Bucky to be able to keep their bodies at home clean. And I'm no longer just working to end sweeps because they are part of a sinful system that criminalizes poverty, but also because I want the community that has opened up and welcomed me not to be broken up and destroyed by the city of Hawthorne. I'm calling on Hawthorne not just to end sweeps, but I'm calling on them to adopt an attitude of friendship and a strategy of listening. If you view the unhouses as your friends instead of problems, nuisances, dangerous, or criminals, you would traumatize them by sweeping them. If your strategy was listening to what unhoused people are actually asking for to help them, you would never hear them mention sweeps. I stand with the Hawthorne abolition alliance in calling on Hawthorne to defund the police and to invest in our community, which includes our unhoused brothers and sisters. Street Watch is watching, and we aren't going anywhere. As many of you are up for reelection, I hope you take notice and keep in mind all the people who call in tonight and, and, and write in. Do the right thing, end sweeps in Hawthorne. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Zaro. Okay, next we have Eleanor. Okay, go ahead, Eleanor.
Yes, my name is Eleanor. Am I online?
Yes, you are. You have three minutes.
Okay. Alright, I was very frustrated that I didn't get to hear from any of the unhoused people that were in that video. Because I know a lot of them really were pretty brave in speaking out. And I feel like there's just more and more of us that are becoming unhoused every day about this time every month. I get really stressed out that I might not make my payments, and there's more people being evicted every day. Just last year, it was more than double, and that was before coronavirus. And I just feel like it's harder for, not just me, but everyone in our community in knowing that if anyone becomes unhoused, they could just be forgotten and potentially swept away by police officers with guns coming and taking their tents and their supplies and their food at a regular basis is horrendous to me. And I just really hope that after this presentation, now that everyone on the council knows what is happening in the city, they will move to get rid of all of those ordinances because they are entirely unconstitutional. And that's my comment.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, next we have Jade Hernandez.
Hi, my name is Jade Hernandez, um, and I'm here to give a comment on the homeless presentation that was given earlier today. The city of Hawthorne has the opportunity to put an end to traumatic sweeps affecting our unhoused neighbors. Your unhoused Hawthorne residents must be left alone. When the police sweep encampments, the city is partaking in a waste of officers' time and the city's resources. With no shelters in Hawthorne or any other viable place for unhoused residents, they are forced to relocate and start again. How can the city council expect our neighbors to pull themselves off by the bootstraps when the, when the city is stealing their boots? How can they play the hands that they are dealt when the cards keep getting reshuffled? Sweeps under the guise of cleaning up the city treat unhoused residents like garbage, to be passed away. They are not garbage, they are your constituents. For too long, the rhetoric of public cleanliness as a euphemism for eugenics has been rampant in our city. Today, I implore you to see sweeps as they are, inhumane, and vote to end them in Hawthorne once and for all. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Carlos Berretto.
Yes, the situation with the homeless is that uh, they go through the necessities of the public against the walls, against the brick walls, like they're parked. I mean, you can see these human feces is what is in the floor. And you, you don't know what else they, they throw rats and they have stuff behind in your patio, in your front yard. You never know, you know, urine or their feces, and you didn't bring COVID, like he's lost. That's why I have to say.
Thank you, sir, for your call.
Okay, next we have Ruben Sanchez. Go ahead, Mr. Sanchez.
Hey, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Ruben Sanchez. I'm with the North Hoppin Community Association. I was listening a little bit, uh, what was going on here, but uh, I wanted to call because I wanted to know that, uh, where's the presentation from the, from the residents? Uh, on how uh, our unhoused visitors defecate in front of our children and homes? Where's the presentation on how our planning commission is failing our city by letting developers take advantage by using low income housing as a tool for high density, high density development? You know, this is a topic that is far beyond our reach. And these individuals, these outsiders that are coming in here and trying to dictate to our city on what we need to be doing about housing, they should be over there with Garcetti, where he received one point eight billion dollars for this same situation. But it's already obvious that they're pushing an agenda, and the public needs to know that. And it's obvious that people are gonna come in and support whoever has, what, empty, empty lots for high density uh, uh, development to occur? Yeah, that, that's what this is all about. You know, do not be fooled. You know the residents. You know my board. You know who I am. Okay, we support our Hawthorne Police Department a hundred and ten percent. They come to our, our aid every time when we call. People are calling. They're very scared of some of these uh, unhoused visitors, because that's what they are. They're visitors. They're passing by. They need help, yes, they do, but it's beyond our reach. We all know this is just eye candy for developers, because they want to destroy our city and our community. This is what this is all about. So whoever's presenting this and whoever brought this in, obviously there's an agenda, and people need to look at this for what it is. So Hawthorne Police Department is doing a great job. The city of Hawthorne supports you. North Hawthorne supports you. And we're gonna keep on supporting you. So for all of you that are out there saying that, oh, yeah, we need, we need to criminalize in the Hawthorne Police Department, you know what? That's your opinion. But we live here. We've been living here, haven't been living here for five years or anything. I've been living here all my life. So is my neighbors, and so are the people that called and, or written emails. And so are the people that go to our, our, our community associations all the time. They've been living here for a very long time, and thi- this is an issue that needed to be addressed, but by Mayor Garcetti. He's the one with the one point eight billion dollars. We don't have billions of dollars. Garcetti has the money. That's where they're supposed to be at. Okay, that's where the money is at. Follow the money, go over there, get it.
Mr. Sanchez, you have fifteen seconds.
It's our city. So we support the Hawthorne Police Department, and don't give up, council. Don't give up. Represent the community that supported you. You, you, you seen the videos that we've already submitted, people defecating in front of our children? People have, have gotten staph infection, our elderly has gotten sick. It's ridiculous. You need housing. There's a lot of land up north. But they're not gonna do it because this is eye candy for developers. This is gold, because we have a weak planning commission that needs to be looked into. God bless you guys, and God bless the city of Hawthorne, which they always will. Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Next we have Ms. Regina Rosborough. Ms. Rosborough, go ahead. You're on. You have three minutes.
Okay, great. Thank you for receiving my call. Um, my name is Regina Roseborough. I'm a resident of Hawthorne. And I'm between um, Broadway and a hundred and twenty second on Oxford Street. Now, in the back of our house, there's a T-shaped alley, which people park there all the time. Now, this particular night on the seventeenth, it was eight cars, including mine, parked in this alley. But I was the only car that received the ticket. Not on the ticket, it says comment. It says no parking at any time, and it says photos taken. Where, where I was parked, there's no sign that states that. There's no sign that's saying that. But I did find a sign out on the alley that says no parking in the alley. So not only if, if that was the case, I'm not the only vehicle in, in, in violation. All eight of us were in violation. So we all should have received the ticket, or we all shouldn't have gotten the ticket. So I don't know why I was singled out into just receiving this ticket. And I was just asking the committee to please dismiss this ticket. Hello?
Yes, any further comments, Ms. Rosborough?
Yeah, and the comment says no parking at any time, and it says photo taken. But where I was parked, there's no sign uh, on the, on the wall or anywhere that says that.
Uh, Ms. Roseborough, the council cannot respond to you. Uh, it's, you know, you can make a public statement. Uh, is there anything further you'd like to share?
That was it for me. I just wanted the ticket to be dismissed. So I don't know who else to turn to to have this taken care of. Because I, I mean, I mean, I know that I did see the sign that says no parking in the alley, but we were all parked in the alley. And I do think that the sign that says that needs to be lowered, because if you drive, it is way high. You can't see that.
Thank you, Ms. Rosborough. You have fifty seconds left, if there's any, any other comments you'd like to add.
No, I just want to know if the ticket is gonna be dismissed or what's gonna be the case. Uh, you can steer me some other way to have this taken care of, because I really don't feel that that was fair. Just for, out of eight cars, only one to get ticketed.
Yes, our off, my office will call you back afterwards, Ms. Rosborough.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Bye bye. Bye bye.
Okay, um, and then next we have um, emails that have been written um, on behalf of the residents.
I'm in, Mr. Barera. You have a good night.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council. I'm reaching out today in concern to the homeless slash mentally ill and the encampments here in the city of Hawthorne where I reside in. These encampments are often littered with needles and trash and soaked in urine and feces, rats, opossums, et cetera. Occasionally scamper through, I fear the consequences. Though, uh, there is no question on the need to do something about this catastrophe. Our streets need to be cleaned up. As a medical professional, I cannot stress enough how infection diseases can easily jump be, beyond the homeless slash mentally ill population. Fueled by sidewalks contaminated with their living condition threatening our health, this is a public crisis. The hygiene situation is horrendous for the homeless. It becomes just like a third world environment where human feces contaminate the area where they are eating and sleeping. We must clean up our city. Our health depends on it. Thank you. Levi Fernandez.
My name is Isabella Roland, resident of Los Angeles, zip code nine zero zero two seven. I'm writing to say that I stand against the use of sweeps to clear homeless encampments. It is a cruel way to criminalize unhoused people who are already, already struggling through pandemic, heat waves, and economic recession. Those resources must be reinvested into services for the community. Thank you for your time, and please take humanity into consideration. Isabella Roland.
Hi, I'm writing to support ending encampment sweeps. Not only are they costly and ineffective, but it's been clearly demonstrated that they are cruel and used to harass unhoused people who are already struggling because of the pandemic. Heat waves, wildfire smoke, and epic, uh, economic recession. Please end encampment sweeps in Hawthorne and reinvest the money saved into services for the community. Best, Clara Hahn.
My name is Tammy, uh, Yang. I am a resident of Los Angeles, but I spend a majority of my time in the South Bay and in particular Hawthorne. I have a deep love and appreciation for Hawthorne and always note when I enter Hawthorne to notice the multiple plaques that state Hawthorne City of Good Neighbors. If it's in the motto of the city to love thy neighbor, I felt it is my duty to bring forth a contradiction that the city of Hawthorne practices. As a concerned neighbor, I urge the council to end the sweeps of homeless encampments. Not only are these sweeps cruel, they are an illegitimate excuse to destroy personal property of the homeless. Sweeps are ineffective and unnecessarily expensive. Forcefully removing the homeless and destroying their personal belongings will not make them disappear. Each person has a right to exist, and sweeping the homeless away in an effort to push the homeless out of Hawthorne will not make the homeless disappear. Where will they go? How will they be rebuilt? Or how will they be rebuilt? Sweeps do not address any of these issues. Sweeps are an admission by the council that the board simply does not care and would rather push a problem to another city. The houseless exists and have every right to exist, just like you and me. So why bring about an ineffective, harmful, and destructive practice to make yourself ignore the fact? Divert the money used for sweeps for actual solutions to the issue. The homeless need services and resources. I ask every one of you, where will the homeless bathe, eat, sleep, care for their kids, their partners, and find some kind of normal, normalcy in the cruel conditions that they are forced into? Sweeps are ineffective, short-sighted, and simply lazy on the council's part. View our neighbors with empathy. View our neighbors with empathy and realize they are like you and me and they need help. This issue cannot be simply swept away. There are zero shelters in Hawthorne, unemployment is on the rise because of COVID nineteen, causing more people to become homeless. So I'll repeat, end the sweeps, we need services, not sweeps, thank you for your time.
Okay, next, um, we have a phone call, one last phone call, from Ms. Azadea Soni. Okay, Ms., you're, uh, you have three minutes to speak.
Okay, thank you, uh, good evening, council members, my name is Azadea Hosseian. That's spelled A-Z-A-D-E-H, Hosseian, H-O-S-S-E-I-N-I-A-N. I'm a Hawthorne resident, I grew up in Hawthorne, I went to Anza Elementary School and Dana Middle School. I'm also a graduate of UCLA and Northwestern University School of Law in Chicago. I'm a civil rights attorney and a member of Street Watch LA. As a civil rights attorney, I've represented unhoused individuals in lawsuits involving city sweeps. I really wanna highlight the legality portion of Street Watch LA's presentation. I know that it might seem that the presenters are being dramatic when they use words like unconstitutional to describe the ordinances that allow for city sweeps. However, I just wanna be very clear that the law is clear in this area. I urge you to read the Ninth Circuit's decision in Martin versus City of Boise, it is really easy to, easy to read, you can Google it. In Martin versus Boise, the federal court in the Ninth Circuit, which is our federal circuit, held that it is a violation of the United States Constitution's Eighth Amendment ban on cruel and, and unusual punishment to enforce ordinances prohibiting persons from sleeping outside and being outside when those persons have no access to alternative shelter. I wanna be clear that this case is binding on us. Martin versus Boise is directly analogous to the situation in Hawthorne where according to the latest count, two hundred and eight people are unhoused, living in the City of Hawthorne, and that there's no shelter or transitional housing options available for the city's unhoused population. Therefore, enforcement of the Hawthorne Municipal Section's allowing for sweeps appears to me to be unconstitutionally cruel and unusual punishment. It is also a violation of the Fourth and Fourth Amendments to the Constitution to seize property without due process under the law. Again, I wanna be clear that there's clear binding law that we have here out of the Ninth Circuit that has held that the due process clause of the Fourth Amendment requires that the government provide persons who experience homelessness with meaningful prior notice and an opportunity to be heard before they seize and or destroy property. However, our group is finding that at least during one sweep conducted in the last month in Hawthorne, persons were not provided with any advance written notice. I spoke to at least one council member who told me that city sweeps are probably not gonna stop. I definitely think there's a disconnect between the law and how the city is operating. Given the strong and clear precedent supporting the ordinances, supporting that the ordinances allowing for sweeps are unconstitutional, I urge you as to ask the city attorney why these city ordinances are not un- unconstitutional. Please allow him to explain to you why they are not unconstitutional, because that's not my reading of the situation here. I also wanna highlight that the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, released pandemic guidelines asking individuals living in encampments not to be evicted, this is President Trump's CDC, um, and.
Excuse me, Ms., you have fifteen seconds.
Okay, they say that this step is necessary to restrain the threat of the virus. So I urge the City of Hawthorne to do the same thing, at least that the, the Trump administration is, um, is promoting. Um, and also, I just wanna mention that, you know, I always, you know, as a resident, I believe that the city is progressive and diverse and that, um, we're tolerant and we believe, um, that, that, you know, we can rethink how policing is done in our community, especially in light of the pandemic. And, and I'm just disheartened by some of city staff's comments saying that they shouldn't be listening to our group because, you know, we're bashing the police. As a nation, we're in a place where we're rethinking how to police in our communities, and I think the people of Hawthorne care about that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have a few, uh, some more emails that we received.
Hawthorne City Council, hello, my name is Dottie, I just wanted to let you know logic obligates you to stop sweeps, legality obligates you to stop sweeps. Even your for- foreign morality obligates you to stop sweeps. Here are some big ideas to keep in mind as you decide how to move forward. Sweeps have been declared unconstitutional twice as a cruel and unusual, uh, unusual punishment and unlawful search and seizure. The last one is from a lawsuit brought to our sister organization against the City of Los Angeles. CDC guidelines specifically state four different reasons why sweeping unhoused people is a public health issue and counterproductive. COVID nineteen-related evictions are expected to skyrocket this fall, leaving many of your citizens unhoused. Homelessness is a systematic failing, not an individual one. And even if it were admitted to yourself, you counts don't have the time or human resources to solve everyone's problems on a case-by-case basis. So take your time and money out of sweeps and enforcement and put it into permanent solutions like long-term housing protections against evictions and medical services. Good afternoon. Sorry, hello, my name is Emily, uh, Lodge, and I'm writing to add my support for those presenting against sweeps today. Thank you for standing by our houseless neighbors, especially when they are facing even more trials with heat waves, air quality, and the pandemic. I am very against sweeps and hope you will decide to stop them as they are traumatic and destructive to entire communities. People cannot be punished into homes and it will only exacerbate the conditions that lead, lead people to the streets. Thank you for defending our neighbors, warmly, Emily Lodge. Homeless sweeps are cruel and inhumane and a waste of taxpayer resources. During COVID and our current fire season especially, they are a risk to public health. Stop criminalizing homelessness. End street sweeps, I stand against the use of sweeps to clear homeless encampments. It is a cruel way to criminalize unhoused people already struggling through pandemic, heat waves, and economic recession. Those resources, AKA the funding of the police sweeping those encampments, must be reinvested into healthy transformative services for the community that are ran by and made by the community, completely divorced from police presence slash involvement. In our nation's system of immense, in our nationwide system of immense inequality, half a million individuals find themselves unhoused each day. Once unhoused, the struggle to become housed becomes ever greater as the struggle for survival overwhelms. Sweeps upend an unhoused individuals' sense of stability, privacy, and dignity, forcing them to pack up their belongings in a little, in little to no time, move elsewhere without any assistance and restart again and again, often having lost some or all of their belongings, including shelter in the process. Sweeps are cruel and unnecessarily, an unnecessary punishment for the result of the systematic poverty so many are made to endure. Hi, I am writing to express dismay at the sweeps in Hawthorne. There is a better way to use resources than, than to criminalize unhoused people who are already struggling with a global pandemic, recession, and heat waves. Best, Kyla Vokolek. To the City of Hawthorne, I stand in support of the Hawthorne Abolition Alliance and against the clear use of sweeps to clear homeless encampments. So often, our institutions criminalize our homeless population and treat them like third-class citizens if like all citizens at all. To commit dangerous and traumatizing sweeps, imagine the terror of being forcibly removed from your home by armed police and your only possessions destroyed that are even unconstitutional is incredibly harmful on its own. But to do so during a pandemic, during historic heat waves, during a recession, during one of the most dangerous times to be unhoused in recent history? Despicable, a waste of resources and taxpayer dollars, absolutely sickening. Those resources must be reinvested into services for the community. For now, they own, they serve only to destroy it, which obviously is your goal, which is cruel. Best, Samantha Hallows. I stand against the use of sweeps to clear homeless encampments. It is a cruel and unfair way to criminalize unhoused people who are already struggling through a pandemic, heat waves, and economic recession. Resources must be reinvested into services that benefit the community instead of harming it. I'm against sweeps and demand that we get rid of this process, thank you, Cara Robertson. To whom it may concern, I write as a concerned citizen against the use of sweeps to clear homeless encampments. It is dehumanizing and violent way to criminalize the unhoused. They are just trying to survive and to raid and destroy their homes during a pandemic, a heat wave, a recession, and a fire season is absolutely unjust. How about reinvesting in the community instead into services that help rather than to criminalize our unhoused neighbors? Thank you for your time, Clay Saldana. Dear Clerk Jimenez, I'm writing to speak out against the use of sweeps to clear homeless encampments. It's a, it's an especially cruel way to criminalize unhoused people who are already suffering. Unhoused people are currently struggling amidst an unprecedented pandemic, pollution from wildfires and ongoing heat waves. Resources that are currently devoted to sweeps should instead be reinvested into services for the community, thanks, Elizabeth.
Good morning, Mayor, uh, morning, Mayor Alex and everyone on Hawthorne City Council, my name is Avellina. I'm an owner, resident of a hundred and thirty-fourth street in the City of Hawthorne, California for over forty years. Before one could walk down the street without any fear, police passed by watching and it was reassuring, in the past months, there's an infestation of homeless, mentally ill, drug addicts who walk down the streets yelling obscenities, littering. I've seen that they even shamelessly use the bathroom. And there are also some who have a white van parked at the end of the block and people, uh, men, live around who are very dirty. They have black bags and beer containers. People park at the corner of a hundred and thirty-fourth and Hawthorne Boulevard in abandoned business that was once an office, a dentist office. You can no longer walk and, uh, less with confidence. You don't feel safe with those activities around you, I would like something to be done with the situation. I know this is happening elsewhere in Hawthorne. These people need help and they need to be picked up because they are impacting everyone's environment. Businesses, peop- family, children, youth, and seniors like me in the City of Hawthorne are affected. I beg you to pick them up because they are also compromising our community health, thanks for your attention.
Hello, the Hawthorne Police Budget is over fifty percent and the Hawthorne Police have endorsed Alex Vargas for mayor. This is no coincidence, how can we trust a politician who is bop? We are the people who live in the east side of Hawthorne, we're black and brown residents, and we are telling you that police do not keep us safe, they harass us and find them in order to do that. If you believe that policing is still something we need, I don't believe you've done the research, but I understand because most folks haven't. So if you're not on board with any policing, then at the very least, understand that fifty percent is way too much and compared to the less than five percent that goes to parks and recreation. The City of Hawthorne invests more in our criminalization than our humanity. Imagine a world where a twenty-four hour crisis hotline that would divert calls about suicide, homelessness, substance abuse, substance use, and conflict resolution away from the police and toward a team of social workers, nurses, and emergency medical technicians. That would mean less harassment and would require actually treating us like humans. I'll say it again, if it wasn't clear before, the Hawthorne Police Budget is over fifty percent and the Hawthorne Police have endorsed Alex Vargas for mayor. There's no coincidence, we cannot continue the corruption in our city. And lastly, end the sweeps. You pray before your meetings, for God's sake, this should be a no-brainer, Byron Baraluna.
My name is Nick Serali, a resident of Hollywood and Los Angeles. I'm writing this message in solidarity with the unhoused residents in Hawthorne, the Hawthorne Abolition Alliance and the Street Watch LA calling for the Hawthorne City Council to immediately end the sweeps and unnecessary harassment of unhoused in Hawthorne. Their correct and humane solution to dealing with issues surrounding encampments is by providing regular outreach to our unhoused neighbors that adopts language and solutions brought forth by the Services Not Sweeps Coalition. Actions that involve criminalizing the homeless that involve law enforcement and bids will only make situations worse. We need robust services that help serve these encampments that treat the individuals with dignity. The most immediate solution that would be of extreme benefit to tenants and homeowners would be to house the homeless in the countless vacant hotel rooms across the city. And I believe it would be extremely wise for the City Council to support hashtag house keys, not handcuffs. In the midst of a devastating pandemic and eviction crisis, the only solution is to invest into solutions that lift up the unhoused. I stand against the use of sweeps to clear homeless encampments. It is a cruel way to criminalize unhoused people already struggling through pandemic, heat waves, and economic depression. Spend the resources on things that actually help the unhoused and the community rather than trying to sweep human beings under the rug to make yourselves feel better, signed, Patrick Murray.
Dear Hawthorne City Council, my name is Lawrence Valencia, and I am a constituent in Hawthorne, California. I stand against the use of sweeps to clear homeless encampments. How can you consciously do that to the struggling Hawthorne residents? We're in the middle of a pandemic, heat waves, and economic recession, and your priority is to criminalize homelessness. How about using those resources to help out our communities instead? Stop criminalizing homelessness and poverty and instead invest in our communities. Do better, sincerely, your constituent in, in Hawthorne, Lawrence Valencia. Urged to end the use of sweeps to clear homeless encampments. It is a cruel way to criminalize the unhoused people who are already struggling through pandemic, heat waves, earthquakes, and horrible air quality due to fires, as well as economic recession. These resources must be reinvested into services for the community to help people rebuild their lives and transition to living in a home instead of kicking someone while they're down on their luck, Michelle LeBeau.
I am a community member and I'm calling to demand that the City of Hawthorne end all homeless encampment sweeps. Burdances forbidding people from setting up camps serve to criminalize poverty and homelessness. This is particularly cruel when the circumstances that lead to someone becoming homeless are often systemic and out of control of the individual. Sweeps further the narrative that unhoused residents are nuisance or dangerous when in fact they are human beings and members of our community who deserve respect and dignity for their concerns to be considered by their city officials. On top of all this, sweeps are ineffective and waste of taxpayer money, Kyle Thornton.
I'm against the use of sweeps to clear homeless encampments. Please use the large amounts of money spent on these sweeps to help lift people up and out of homelessness instead of attempting to sweep them under the rug. It's heartbreaking that we as a society have felt these people and many in our community would rather they disappear than be cared for with compassion. It's our responsibility, please stop sweeps, Hillary B.
Hello, I'm emailing to comment on the immoral use of street sweeps on our unhoused neighbors. This is a cruel method that solves nothing and only adds to the struggle of living unhoused. These resources need to be reinvested to serve the community, not displaced them during a pandemic. If you're uncomfortable seeing rows of unhoused people in Hawthorne streets, use your power to help them not criminalize them, thank you, Charlie M.
Hi, my name is Sarah Kleiner and I live three blocks from unhoused encampment in Hawthorne that has been swept multiple times by the city and police. I'm calling to mane- demand the City of Hawthorne stop all encampments. I'm calling to mane- demand the city of Hawthorne stop all encampment sweeps. They are moral, inhumane, ineffective and in Hawthorne unconstitutional. These are our neighbors, members of our community and most importantly, human beings who deserve dignity and empathy. They should not be criminalized and harassed for having no place to go, especially when their own city does not provide any kind of shelter. Unhoused folks are facing increasingly difficult situations as we enter recession, in the middle of a pandemic. In the middle of a massive heatwave with our skies. When our skies are literal poison, they do not need the added trauma in their homes and possessions being destroyed. Unemployed due to COVID and the impending renters crisis will only increase unhoused population Hawthorne. Is only going to grow, so it is imperative that the city council demonstrate empathy and compassion for our neighbors and end sweeps. Sarah Kleiner.
Hello, I wanted to know that you all will be doing, I wanted to know what. You will all be doing to put a stop to the sweeps of homeless encampments in Hawthorne. Those sweeps are cruel and they criminalize unhoused people who are already struggling so much as it is. The hit city of Hawth- Hawthorne is supposed to be a city of good neighbors. Good neighbors do not let their unhoused struggling community members to be harassed and stolen from. We are going through a pandemic, so it is especially heinous for the city to continue this. Instead of spending money doing these sweeps and filing the, filling the pockets of the police who gleefully harass the homeless. We should put money towards homeless shelters or transitioning housing to help get back to their feet, help them get back to their feet. Will you end the homeless sweeps? Best Gloria G.
Hello, I'm writing today to share that I stand against using sweeps to clear out homeless encampments. Sweeps are cruel form of punishment inflicted upon members of our community who happen to be unhoused. These sweeps, in addition to being inhumane and terrorizing to our community, don't solve anyone's problem. But instead, they create endless additional problems for those they target. Why are we making life harder for unhoused people during a pandemic and an unprecedented fire season? Why provide additional barriers to people's survival and success? Why not use your funding to instead provide resources, food, water showers, bathrooms, masks and medical supplies? To people who are trying to get by in order to help them on their way to a more stable life. Our resources must be reinvested into our communities. Thank you, Emily Salditch.
It is inhumane to continue to forcibly remove our unhoused neighbors in the middle of a pandemic. Record unemployment and an eviction crisis. There is no affordable housing and no jobs available for them. Where do you expect them to go, especially after you have destroyed their homes and all of their possessions? Have some compassion for your fellow humans. Thank you, Christine Sparks.
Dear Mr. Jimenez, I'm writing to ask you to help end the practice of homeless sweeps in the city of Hawthorne. Sweeps, especially now during a global pandemic, do nothing but exacerbate. Dear Mr. Jimenez, I'm writing to ask you to help end the practice of homeless sweeps in the city of Hawthorne. Sweeps, especially now during a global pandemic, do nothing but exacerbate the problem of homelessness in L.A. County. Homelessness is on the rise in Hawthorne and in the country. And ineffective sweeps do nothing but make it more difficult for homeless people to live. Less likely for them to access social services and exit poverty. And it criminalizes the poverty that is a root cause of homelessness. In addition, CDC guidelines recommend cities allow homeless individuals to remain in place while no housing options are available. As no such options are currently available in Hawthorne, I believe the city has no standing to continue these sweeps. I ask you, the mayor and the other members of city management. To replace sweeps with a program utilizing trauma-informed care to help end vicious cycle. A vicious cycle for unhoused in the city. Thank you for listening. Sincerely, Josh Sarah Brenner.
Dear Council, City Council, the forced removal of shelter. Under normal circumstances is such a counterproductive, cruel and traum- traumatizing act. We need solutions, not ineffective Band-Aids. Our unhoused neighbors need us now more than ever. Without further resources, we will only continue to perpetuate the problem instead of helping those that need it the most. I stand against the use of sweeps to clear homeless encampments and truly cannot understand the lack of humanity and empathy. Especially considering the current climate. This is an unfair way to criminalize unhoused people already struggling through heatwaves, toxic air quality, economic recession and a global pandemic. Those resources must be reinvested into services for the community if we are ever going to see positive change. Sincerely, Alicia Gomez.
Hello, I'm writing to request my comment be read aloud at tomorrow's meeting on Hawthorne's current homelessness crisis. My name is Meriwether Clark. I strongly encourage the Hawthorne City Council to end this barbaric and inhumane use of poverty.
Hello, my name is Meriwether Clark. I strongly encourage the Hawthorne City Council to end the barbaric and inhumane use of sweeps. It is a duty of every city government to protect the lives and dignity of all its citizens, not just those lucky enough to secure and afford permanent housing. Encampment sweeps unfairly punish the most vulnerable in our city. In our community, including veterans, domestic abuse survivors, the mentally ill and the disabled. While simultaneously serving as an excuse by local county and state governments. To avoid addressing the systemic failures many of their own making that cause poverty and homelessness. To indulge in this punitive behavior is not only a useless and ineffective waste of taxpayer money. But it represents a complete evasion of actual governance at the literal expense of constituents. Perhaps worst of all, sweeps continuously expose household, houseless individuals to repeated trauma. And loss of material necessities while only further glorifying the inherent violence of a city. More invested in policing its residents than restoring dignity and actual safety to its streets. Providing care through investment in community housing. A far superior response than continuing to punish the most vulnerable among us. I would encourage you to take the first step towards the solution by permanently banning sweeps. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I hope the hard work that Streets Watch L.A. puts into bringing this issue to your attention is not dismissed. As I am, I'm often afraid that sometimes those who are most passionate for something selfless. Tend to be dismissed just for being so clear on their morals. But they've done a tremendous job in helping many people see the reality of homelessness in L.A. County. That I hope you listen to them and everyone else who is participating with them. Homelessness is an unfortunate circumstance that that can literally happen to anyone, especially during these trying times. As long as a few very prob- probable factors overlap. Someone might one day not be able to afford rent because rent keeps increasing while they are still being paid a major minimum wage. The COVID nineteen pandemic might cause one to be cut from their job and they may be unable to find a new one. On top of all this, with any one unexpected event such as a commonly exhibit. Or tent medical bill, many of those who are once considered to have a normal lifestyle. Can tip into high-risk territory of becoming unhoused. The fact that such everyday things like rent affordability, wages and job instability cause homelessness shows that homelessness is a deeply systemic issue. The city by itself cannot fix the problem of rising rent, stagnant wages and job opportunities. Then the least it can do is not attack the victims of those problems. Stopping street, streets, sweeps is only the first step towards common decency. And respecting an individual's space, privacy and mature property. If you are unable to provide safe homeless shelters for unhoused people in the city, the least you can do is allow them to live. In the homes they were able to create for themselves with minimal resources there, they were resourceful enough to get. It is extremely demoralizing to sweep their belongings as they are stating. That their best effort at a home is unequivocally trash in your eyes. Any street sweeps especially cr- crucial now with COVID nineteen and the recession triggered by. Uh, it is putting even more city residents at higher risk of being unhoused. I'm not sure what the initial reasons for street sweeps were. But if it was for aesthetics, I'd rather live in a place knowing that people are being respected. If it is, if it was for the environmental concerns, why can't we relocate funds to provide more public amenities? It is like trash bins and public restrooms. There's a lot more we can do to treat unhoused people with respect and provide them opportunities to have a roof over their head. If we invest in these social services. But for today, the first step is to just end a necessary tack that compounds the struggles that unhoused people already face. In having to still live outdoors during extreme heatwaves and breathing in the wildfire smoke air amongst other everyday. Conditions that we have the privilege of not needing to consider. Let's end street sweeps. Thank you, Lydia.
Hi, I'm writing because I stand against the use of street sweeps to clear homeless encampments. Is a cruel way to criminalize unhoused people already struggling through pandemic, heatwaves and economic recession. Those resources must be reinvested into service for the community. Thank you, Nicolette Norgad.
Good evening, I hope this email finds you well. I'm writing this email in an effort to convey the message that we should end street sweeps as. It only brings further harm to our community. Please take notice of the people that need true assistance and don't further perpetuate a situation that put these. Puts these groups of people in even more disadvantaged spot when they are trying to just live peacefully. I stand against the use of street.
Hello, my name is Jay Fernando.
Good evening, I hope this email finds you well. I'm writing this email in an effort to convey the message that we should. End sweeps as it only brings further harm to our community. Please take notice of the people that need true assistance and don't further perpetuate a situation that puts these groups of people. In even more disadvantaged spot when trying to just live peacefully. I stand against the use of sweeps to clear homeless encampments. It is a cruel way to criminalize unhoused people already struggling through the pandemic, heatwaves and econ- and economic recession. Those resources must be reinvested into services for the community. Thank you for your time. Best regards, Jasmine.
Hello Hawth- Hawthorne City Council, I fully, full-heartedly stand against the use of sweeps to clear homeless encampments. It is a cruel way to criminalize unhoused people already struggling through the pandemic, heatwaves and economic recession. These resources must be reinvested into services for the community. Thank you, Danielle.
I stand against the use of sweeps to clear homeless encampments. It is a cruel. It is cruel and adds insult to injury. Those resources must be reinvested into services for the community. Seriously, how can you even consider it? No more, no more sweeps.
Good evening, I stand strongly against the use of sweeps to clear homeless encampments. It is a cruel way to criminalize unhoused people already struggling through the COVID nineteen pandemic. Heatwaves, smoky air and economic recession. Sweeps are dangerous, unconstitutional, inhumane, traumatizing and ineffective. You cannot punish people into homes. That are increasingly more expensive and jobs that are disappearing, all while providing no support. Sweeps do nothing to address the root causes of homelessness in L.A. County. The resources you use to conduct these sweeps must be reinvested into services for the community. You must treat these folk as human with care and compassion and we demand that you start by ending sweeps in solidarity. Happy Springer.
People facing homelessness are at increased risk for facing violence, increased health issues. Mental health crisis and array of other issues that require support and services, not sweeps. This is a public health concern and should be treated as such, not through punishment in the form of sweeps. Sweeps are not effective and they waste resources that can be used to help people facing homelessness instead. Serve and help the public, including our unhoused citizens through seizing sweeps.
Dear Paul Jimenez, I'm writing to you to voice my support for calls to end sweeps of unhoused folks encampments. The practice of sweeps is extremely cruel and not only are sweeps cruel, but they are also entirely ineffective at addressing. The under- underlying cost of homelessness and poverty in this society. These resources spent abusing and criminalizing unhoused folks should be redirected to providing them with actual services. Stop the sweeps and start providing actual care services for people.
I urge Hawthorne City Council to end street sweeps in the midst of a global pandemic in which. The U.S. has the highest COVID cases and COVID caused deaths in the world. Evictions and street sweeps are inhumane and unnecessary. The community is in need of services, not sweeps. Sweeps are the forced removal of unhoused people from where they are sheltering. For which they are threatened with fines and arrest by police and bulldozers. There have been three street sweeps against the unhoused in the last month alone in Hawthorne. Street sweeps are dangerous, unconstitutional, traumatizing, racist and ineffective. You cannot punish people into homes that are built and sold at expensive prices when. Inexistent jobs that are constantly dr- discriminate against and reject those of black and brown race. Those who are formerly incarcerated and those without a home address. Sweeps do nothing to address the root causes of homelessness in the country. Anyone can be homeless. And almost anyone in the U.S., including those in Hawthorne, are on the brink of homelessness due to unfair conditions placed on the people by rich corporations and politicians. I stand against the use of sweeps to clear homeless encampments. Is a cruel way to criminalize unhoused people already struggling through the pandemic made worse by the Trump administration. Heatwaves exa- surve- surveilled by the climate change and economic recession caused by corporations and politicians. Resources must be reinvested into the services needed by the community and the community does not need street sweeps.
To whom I may concern, I'm taking time from my house. In Hor- in Torrance, California to demand that the Hawthorne City Council vote to permanently end the cruel and unethical practice of sweeping. Encampments of Hawthorne's displaced citizens. We're in the middle of pandemic, massive layoffs and evictions, protests, unbearable heatwaves and a looming economic crisis. What we need right now is to invest in our community and services that help alleviate homelessness. Instead of using bulldozers and armed police to harass and intimidate an already vulnerable population. I demand that the City Council of Hawthorne immediately stop the sweeps and to use those funds in a rehabilitative way. Best Madison Price.
Good evening, I'm writing to remind you that sweeps of homeless encampments are traumatic experiences to those targeted. I implore you to imagine as a fellow human having nowhere to live besides a tent. And being approached at that tent by bulldozers and armed policemen with whom many unhoused people have a fraught relationship to begin with. And then being forcibly removed. These sweeps are a means of criminalizing those with a life experience. I'm guessing you may not understand on a firsthand basis. These are real people who are struggling through this scarred fors- forsaken year of COVID fires and unemployment without a real home. As Street Watch L.A. says, you cannot punish people into homes that are increasingly expensive and jobs that are disappearing. Sweeps do nothing to address the root cause of homelessness in L.A. I ask you to use the resources provided for these sweeps for other services beneficial to the community and do not traumatize innocent people. Please use this chance to be helpful, not harmful. Thank you, Cecilia Gabriel.
Council members, in the midst of a devastating pandemic and a ruthless eviction. Unhoused people need services, not sweeps. Sweeps are a direct violation of CDC protocol. But it doesn't take an expert to see that they are dangerous, unconstitutional, traumatizing and ineffective. Punishment does nothing to address the root of the homelessness problem. Sweeps are a cruel way of unnecessary criminalizing unhoused people and I stand against them. Thank you for your time, Uma.
Dear City of Hawthorne, I'm a resident of L.A. County and a former housing policy professional with a PhD in city planning from Berkeley. I am writing to argue for a current permanent end to sweeps of unhoused people. All angles of urban accounting and finance, healthcare and mental health or law enforcement. Show that sweeps are completely ineffective at best and at worst, a violent and illegal practice based on long outdated understandings of poverty. They are a huge waste of resources and direct valuable time and energy at disrupting lives. That can and should be served of services. A small portion of sweeps and law enforcement costs. Would go to a much longer way of remediating and preventing the problems faced by people living in the city without housing. I urge you first to end the sweeps and second, to direct those funds towards services that will actually make a difference. The research is clear, if homelessness is a problem, services and path and a path to a home is the solution. Sincerely, Matthew Wade, PhD, City and Regional Planning, University of California, Berkeley.
I stand against the use of sweeps to clear homeless encampments. It is a cruel way to criminalize unhoused people. Already struggling through pandemic, heatwaves and economic recession. These resources must be reinvested into services for the community. It is no good to punish our most vulnerable. Sincerely, Lane McFadden.
Hello, it is despicable that there are sweeps of encampments going on in Hawthorne. If Hawthorne is not providing housing in the forms of shelters or transitional housing, it is against the law for these sweeps to be happening. Use the money spent on these sweeps to relocate resources to the unhoused population and services regarding mental.
Use the money spent on these sweeps to relocate resources to the unhoused population and services regarding mental health, affordable housing. Substance abuse, free identification papers, access to showers, et cetera. You have a homeless coordinator, give him a team of people to figure out what to do. Criminalizing unhoused has historically never worked. I may not be a resident of Hawthorne, but you should know that LA County is watching your next move. Andrea Sanchez Vidal, Torrance resident. I stand against the use of sweeps to clear homeless encampments. It is a cruel way to criminalize homeless. People already struggling through the pandemic, heatwaves, and economic recession. Those resources must be reinvested into the, into services for the community. I stand against the use of sweeps to clear homeless encampments. It is a cruel practice that does not address the root cause of homelessness in LA County. Sweeps just further traumatize an already vulnerable population and strips them of their possessions and any best ability they have. People choose to live in these encampments when local shelters are full. And they believe encampments will offer them more security, autonomy, safety, and a set location where outreach workers. Can find them to deliver food, medicine, and supplies. During this especially trying time, it is essential that service providers be able to locate homeless people to provide them. Information about COVID nineteen as well as supplies like masks to protect them. In March, the US Census for Disease Control and Prevention issued guidelines instructing cities that unless housing units are available. Do not clear encampments during COVID spread, during, yeah, during community spread of COVID nineteen. Clearing encampments can cause people to disperse throughout the community, which increase the potential for disease spread. A better solution would be to provide these encampments with more resources such as trash cans, portable toilets, and hand washing stations. And materials to sanitize. The real issue which the city should be focusing on instead of sweeping homeless encampments is the severe shortage of affordable housing. We're living in one of the worst economies with a diminished job market and increase in individuals forced into homelessness. We should be helping these, this vulnerable population instead of punishing them. It is inhumane and cruel, not to mention according to the CDC and SAFE. It is time for the City of Hawthorne to do better and show some humanity because when people cared more about the aesthetic of the community. Than they do about the people in it, then we have a severe problem. Greetings, Dr. Jimenez and Hawthorne City Council members. I know that the Hawthorne City Council will be meeting. Um, this is me to discuss how to address homelessness in the City of Hawthorne and that one possible option on the table. For kid- for consideration is the implementation and expansion of homeless sweeps. I know that there are even those among us who would favor using government and police power to cast out these members of our community. Homeless sweeps might even temporarily treat symptoms of noise or crowding or sanitation in specific areas. However, in the long run. They come at the terrible cost of turning members of our community who have lost jobs and access to healthcare into criminals and outcasts. Then providing them with the assistance they desperately need. I hope that when you meet, you will consider a more humane approach to address Hawthorne's challenges with homelessness. And that you will work to establish policies that will extend shelter, care, humanity to these members of our community. With kind regards, Stephen Allen. Please stop the use of sweeps on homeless encampments. I ask the members of the council to consider if they would willing to destroy the shelter of one of their friends or family. This is clearly cruel and humane. Instead, we should use these resources to help as many of these people as possible. We're in a pandemic and your citizens' lives are on the line. Simone Johnson. The street sweeps must be stopped. Our unhoused communities of LA deserve resources and help, not aggressive removal from their living space. The pandemic, heatwaves, and recession has made life even more difficult for so many in LA. And our unhoused neighbors deserve our support. It is absolutely unacceptable. That folks trying to survive are being criminalized and bullied by the city and law enforcement. Stop the sweeps and use our taxpayer dollars for support and assistance. Caleb Grant, Los Angeles resident. I, Guadalupe Morales Rodriguez, stand against the use of sweeps to clear homeless encampments. It is a cruel way to criminalize unhoused people already struggling through the pandemic, heatwaves, and economic recession. Those resources must be reinvested into services for the community. These homeless people need medical, psychiatric, drug counseling, therapy, et cetera, et cetera, attention. Stop sweeping humans under the rug. Take responsibility of the city you are in charge of. People need help, not neglect. People over profit. God bless. Kind regard, Guadalupe Morales Rodriguez. To the City Council of Hawthorne, it takes a specific degree of callousness to destroy the property of unhoused. You have failed these people by neglecting to provide them with social services so that they don't end up on the streets. You have caused their homelessness through the policies that you pass, and yet your solution to their homelessness. Destroy their property and eliminate whatever dignity they have left. Also, we're in a pandemic and yet you think it's appropriate to destroy what little shelter and isolation that these people have. Shame on you, blank you, your blanking goals. Private property is a social contract. One can be given and taken away at any moment by anyone, as you have demonstrated. Remember that before you sleep at night in your homes. Love, Abby. To whom I may concern, I am supporter of Street Watch LA and the unhoused community in Hawthorne in their calls to end sweeps. I stand against the use of sweeps to clear encampments. It is a cruel way to criminalize unhoused people already struggling through pandemic. Heatwaves and economic recession. These resources must be reinvested into services for the community. Thank you, Chelsea Boyle. Dear members of Hawthorne City Council, I stand against the use of sweeps to clear homeless encampments. It is a cruel way to criminalize the unhoused people already struggling through pandemic, heatwaves, and economic recession. The use of sweeps does not help our homeless, our houseless neighbors in any way. In fact, it further displaces them. While all of their belongings are disposed of. These people are left without nothing but a traumatizing experience. Los Angeles must find a way to reinvest these resources into services for the community. Unhoused citizens deserve shelter and protection from all the elements they are facing each day. Los Angeles must get a move on. Sincerely, Juliette Janklow. Dear council members, I am demanding the City of Hawthorne immediately seize all sweeps of our unhoused neighbors. And remove the unethical laws currently in place that make it illegal to be homeless. There are no shelters in Hawthorne, so these sweeps are essentially just forcing at risk. Individuals to move around the city without offering any alternatives. Oftentimes, essential belongings are destroyed or legally stolen by Hawthorne PD, LA shares, and or sanitation. This is unconstitutional and only exacerbates the already difficult situation. Unhoused folks are far more likely to be victims of violent attacks and sweeps just leave them even more vulnerable. These acts of violence based on bias against someone's housing status are perpetrated by you, the City Council. Because you continue to allow inhumane sweeps that attack a person's right to exist, to occur in the city. Sweeps are ineffective and a waste of time and resources. All they do is further destabilize unhoused folks, take money from the exorbitant Hawthorne Police Budget. And redirect these funds into services that uplift unhoused folks rather than punish them. These services should lead with compassion and understanding. If the mission statement of the City of Hawthorne really is to preserve, protect, and enhance the quality of life for those. Who live and work in our community by providing the highest quality of services, you would immediately end the fundamentally immoral sweeps. And create services that support all individuals, including unhoused folks. Show the City of Hawthorne that you value the well bearing being of your community members of our public property. Hello, I am a stakeholder in Hawthorne. I stand against the use of sweeps to clear homeless encampments. Sweeps are a cruel and unusual tactic used to criminalize unhoused people who are already struggling through the pandemic. In addition to heatwaves, poor quality, and economic crisis. Sweeps target our most vulnerable community members, offering them zero services to alternatives. Please do not conduct sweeps in Hawthorne, redirect the funding and services. And resources to provide services that actually support unhoused community. Thank you, Ali Kokoff. Hello, I am Naomi and I am, I am writing to demand that you end street sweeps. The end of Hawthorne has shown their incompetence to solve the homeless crisis in their city and have resorted. To their most inhumane actions. Sweeps does not. Create system to, a system to protect people from becoming unhoused. Sweeps does not create accessible mental health facilities to keep unhoused people healthy. Sweeps does not humanize unhoused people and help to keep them healthy. Homelessness is a result of systemic failure, not individual failure. During the pandemic where unhoused are most vulnerable, the City of Hawthorne will choose to harm those most vulnerable. I am utterly ashamed that I grew up in Hawthorne. Hello, the Hawthorne Police budget is over fifty percent and the Hawthorne Police have endorsed Alex Vargas for mayor. This is no coincidence. How can we trust a politician who is bugged? We are the people who live in the east side of Hawthorne. We're black and brown residents and we are telling you that police do not keep us safe. They harass us and fund them in order to do that. If you believe that policing is still something we need, I don't believe you've done the research, but I understand because most folks haven't. So if you're not on board with any policing, then at the very least, understand that fifty percent is way too much. And compared to the less than five percent that goes to parks and recreation. The City of Hawthorne invests more in our criminalization than our humanity. Imagine a world where a twenty-four hour crisis hotline that would divert calls about suicide, homeless, substance abuse. Substance use and conflict resolution away from the police and toward a team of social workers, nurses, and emergency medical technicians. That would mean less harassment and would require actually treating us like humans. I'll say it again if it wasn't clear before. The Hawthorne Police budget is over fifty percent and the Hawthorne Police have endorsed Alex Vargas for mayor. There's no coincidence. We cannot continue the corruption in our city. And lastly, end the sweeps. You pray before your meetings, for God's sake, this should be a no brainer. Byron Barauana. Saint Perfe, US Marine Corps motto. Now it is our turn as communities to be always faithful to one another. My hope is that Hawthorne will end the city sweeps and become a beacon of light for our country. Dear Hawthorne City Council, my name is Linia and I am a constituent residing in Hawthorne, California. In case your memory has had any trouble, we're currently still battling a health pandemic, a climbing eviction, climbing eviction rates. You have chosen to turn a blind eye to the community and refuse to address the harm being inflicted by your complicity. Forcing sweeps on the unhoused people in the city is not only ineffective, it is harmful. Finding and arresting our unhoused neighbors is unconstitutional and dangerous to their health and well-being. You cannot punish people into homes that are unaffordable and jobs are not available. I stand against the use of sweeps to clear homeless encampments. It is cruel to criminalize unhoused people that are already struggling to survive through the heatwaves, pandemic, and economic recession. Those resources must be reinvested into services for the, for the community. I demand you take up your responsibilities as a pu- as public servants to the City of Hawthorne today, not tomorrow. Regards, Linia. Hello, I'm writing in solidarity with Street Watch LA and Hawthorne. Abolition Alliance's demands to end sweeps. Sweeps are cruel as they forcibly remove unhoused people. From their area of shelters and separated from their belongings. Sweeps also foster and recreate distrust and uh animosity between police and unhoused for justified reasons. Police fear monger and unconstitutional threaten unhoused neighbors who are in precarious positions. Have very little alternatives available to their encampments. Sweeps of encampments in public places or walkways are unconstitutional, given that there, there are zero shelters in Hawthorne. And the surrounding South Bay. Furthermore, during the COVID nineteen pandemic, the CDC has mandated that unhoused people should be allowed to remain where they are sheltered. Forcibly moving unhoused people can spread the virus not only among unhoused populations, but to those in the surrounding areas. Where people are forced to move to. Finally, I explicitly condemn the actions of Hawthorne City Council for the consistently backtracking and threatening Street Watch LA. And Hawthorne Abolition Alliance. It's shameful that these organizations were offered a seat at the table and almost immediately. Had a fear and cowardice that offer, that offer has been revoked or walked away in various ways. The narrative video created by Street Watch LA was intended to allow platform of unhoused people of Hawthorne and their experience. Experience must be heard. Hawthorne City Council should be ashamed to have condemned this presentation and the content within it. And are clearly afraid of confronting the issues in their city which they have been complicit in creating and recreating. End sweeps and take a stand with your constituents. We distribute public funds towards city programs to address the roots of these issues. The city needs COVID nineteen testing centers, mental health resources, shelters, affordable housing, free security programs, and more. Hawthorne does not need more cops and does not need more sweeps.
Oh, Mr. City, uh, Mr. City Clerk?
I'm writing to urge City.
Mister, Mister City Clerk?
Yes.
Uh, somebody's typing out there and that's okay, but uh, just everybody make sure you guys mute yourself. So that, uh, so that, uh, we can hear the city clerk clearly and the resident, uh, the resident and presenter's comments, please?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
The council to immediately stop all sweeps in Hawthorne. Sweeps are dangerous, traumatizing, expensive, and they criminalize the most vulnerable members of our communities. Rather than terrorizing these communities and forcing them out of their, of their homes, they've created. The city needs to listen to their needs and provide services that actually help. Dr. Paul Jimenez, dear City Council, my name is Michelle Cruz. I'd like to express my feelings about Proposition sixteen. I urge anyone who discusses racial discrimination to vote against. On November third, Proposition sixteen is against the law and is legalizing discrimination. Please help to stop discrimination of any race in our community and in our state. I believe we should treat everyone equally, give them the opportunity to become successful in this great state. Vote no on Proposition sixteen. Please read out my comments.
That is the end of public comments for tonight.
Thank you, sir. Mister Clerk, can you read a consent calendar, please?
Yes, I can. Mister Mayor, I have nine items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item six, approval of the City Council minutes for the regular meeting of September eighth, twenty twenty. Item seven, approval of waiver of full readings for resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item eight, City Treasurer's request approval of the warrants. Item eleven, Resolution number eighty-two thirty-four, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California. Authorizing, approving, and ratifying the submittal of the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, State of California. Office of Traffic Safety Selective Traffic Enforcement Program. Uh, grant number P two two, sorry, PT two one one seven nine. Item twelve, Resolution number eighty-two thirty-five, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California. Authorizing, approving, ratifying, uh, the submittal of the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, State of California Office. Of Traffic Safety Right to Live Motorcycle Education Grant Number MC two one zero zero five. Item thirteen, Resolution number eighty-two thirty-six, a resolution of the City Council of the City. City of Hawthorne, California, establishing no overnight parking restrictions between the hours of nine PM to five AM. On the north side of the, of one sixteenth street from Hawthorne Boulevard to two hundred and forty-five feet west of Hawthorne Boulevard. Item fourteen, Resolution number eighty-two thirty-seven, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California. Ratifying the Administrative Order Regarding Effects of COVID nineteen and the city's effort to facilitate reopening of personal care services. Issued by the city manager on September third, twenty twenty. Item fifteen, Resolution number eighty-two thirty-eight, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California. In support of the real economic support that acknowledges unique restaurant assistance needed to survive. Uh, Restaurants Act of twenty twenty, HR seventy-one ninety-seven, establishing. A one hundred and twenty billion dollar restaurant revitalization fund to provide structured relief to food services. Service or drinking establishments through December thirty-first, twenty twenty, and for other purposes. Item sixteen, Resolution number eighty-two thirty-nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California. In support of Proposition twenty-two, the app-based drivers as contractors and labor policies initiative. To consider app-based drivers to be independent contractors and not employees on November third, twenty twenty, election ballot for adoption.
Um, I'd like to pull fifteen and sixteen, please, for discussion.
Yes. I make a motion for all other items?
Second.
Please vote.
Councilmember Watt?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Taeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
So number fifteen is, uh, in support of the Restaurant twenty twenty. The restaurant industry was especially hit hard by COVID nineteen. And this grant program proposes to stabilize that, uh, industry. For the independent restaurants, not the large restaurants, but independent restaurants. That are food service or drinking establishments, including caterers, caterers. It would not apply to chains of twenty or more locations and would not apply to publicly traded restaurants. If this passes, our restaurants and breweries here in Hawthorne, who are really hurting. would be able to take advantage of it. And the good news that is that it is, it is grant money and not um not loans. So, so this is, this is money that would be uh, this, this would be um free money if they can, if they can apply and be, and be um eligible for it. And I, and I'm, so I move that we uh, that we approve the support of this act.
I second.
Please vote. Roll, roll call vote.
Councilmember Watt?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Taeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
So item number sixteen um is in support of Proposition twenty-two, which is a state initiative um entitling a app-based drivers at uh to be considered contractors um in uh, as a, as an exception to uh prop- uh to, to AB five. Um, if you recall, AB five um uh reclassified who would be considered um an employee and who would be considered an independent contractor. And, and this really disadvantaged a lot of people who um who, who prefer, especially drivers, who prefer to have the freedom of um of, of not being considered employees and of, of creating their own hours and their own um, their own terms of employment. Um, and so um this would classify drivers for app-based transportation and delivery companies as independent contractors and make them a, them an exemption to the requirements of AB five. So I think this is this also deserves our support. I, I move that we support this.
I second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Watt?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Abstaining.
Councilmember Taeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Um, and Mayor Vargas?
Abstain.
Okay, the vote uh reflects uh Mayor and Councilmember Montero abstaining and the rest of the council voting yes. I'm gonna go ahead and move forward with item number eighteen.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Uh, now is the time and place for a public hearing amending chapter seventeen point seven four short-term rental permits of Title seventeen zoning of the Hawthorne Municipal Code to allow secondary residence newly defined to include dwellings owned by persons whose primary residence is in the city of Hawthorne to be subject to home sharing regulations and not vacation rental regulations. Adding a cap of ten permit to be issued per year with a limitation of one permit per property owner. Planning Department's declaration publication filed, no written communications were received.
Go ahead. Uh, so that is, uh, is there anybody who would like to speak on this topic? From the public? No, if not, I'll declare the hearing closed order. Go ahead, Mister uh City Clerk.
Okay. Ordinance number twenty-two zero six, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California amending chapter seventeen point seven four, short-term rental permits of Title seventeen zoning of the Hawthorne Municipal Code to allow secondary residence newly defined to include dwellings owned by persons whose primary residence is in the city of Hawthorne to be subject to home sharing regulations and not vacation rental regulations. Adding a cap of ten days such permits to be issued on a first come, first served basis per year with a limitation of one permit per property owner for introduction.
Mayor, I would like to ask um.
Yeah, I meant, I'm, I'm moved to introduce that, so, but you could go ahead and uh have any conversation on it.
Yes, I'd like to ask Planner uh Art Bashmakian to comment on this ordinance.
Uh, thank you um, Mayor Vargas and councilmembers. Uh, Art Bashmakian, interim assistant planning director. I'll just make a brief summary, if you've already heard uh from the introduction by the city clerk. So on March tenth, twenty twenty, the council adopted a new ordinance to regulate short-term rentals. Generally defined as a unit or a portion of a unit offered for rent for no more than thirty consecutive days. This new ordinance established two categories of short-term rentals. One category is called home sharing, which is defined as an accessory use of a host primary residence to allow temporary lodging for periods of thirty consecutive days or less. That's the type where the, uh, it's an owner occupied. The other one is called vacation rentals. So that's defined as a dwelling unit that is not a primary residence of the owner and which is available for temporary lodging for no more than ninety days during a calendar year. So since adoption ordinance, uh, there's been interest uh, uh, by council, council members to, a desire to eliminate the ninety-day restriction for vacation rentals if the owner's primary residence is in the city of Hawthorne. So if you're, if you are an owner of a property and you live in Hawthorne and you also have a, another property that you're renting that this ninety-day restriction not apply to those uh owners. On July first, twenty twenty, the planning commission considered amending this ordinance to eliminate the ninety-day restriction on properties owned by individuals who own and live in the city and to treat those properties like home sharing instead of vacation rentals. However, the elimination of this restriction would only be granted to a maximum of ten units annually on a first come, first served basis. And that no more than one permit would be issued per property owner. Uh, I mean, that's it in a nutshell what this proposal is all about, which is before you today. Thank you.
Gashmakian, I have some questions.
Sure.
Thank you. So this would mean that in this particular type of rental there are an unlimited number of rentals that someone could uh issue eh eh during the year? Some, someone who has a home to share could share with an unlimited number of people during the year, is that correct?
Now, what, what this means, if you, first of all, the restriction currently the ordinance restricts um people who uh own the property, but they don't live on that property. It limits that to a vacation rental, which is only allowed to be used for ninety days. But the ordinance would allow somebody that owns the property and also lives in the city. That's the critical thing. They have to live in the city and own this as a secondary property or it's third property that they own. This would allow those units to be used as a short-term rental. Um, but only ten units could be allowed. So there's a prob- probably about four hundred to five hundred such units in the city that somebody owns another property. They live on the, in the unit that they own. They also own another property. And there's appro- approximately four hundred to maybe five hundred eighty-nine such units in the city.
So how many times could they rent their property during the year? Under this proposed system?
Under this, they would be treated just like the, the home sharing, which is, which doesn't have, does not have a limit. So as long as the rental for thirty late, thirty days or less.
They could rent it to an unlimited number of people during the year.
They would be, no, they would be able to rent that um three hundred sixty-five days a year for, for a uh as a home sharing uh use. Unlike vacation rentals where they could do that only for ninety days out of the year.
How many people could they rent to during the year?
That aspect of the ordinance is not changing. I'm gonna take a look to see what that specific measure is because that's not changing.
Well, what is it then?
Let me, just give me a moment. Let me just find that section of the code. Uh, short-term rentals should not, should not be used by more than two guests per bedroom plus two additional guests at one time. This is existing code. And that is not changing.
To the chair.
Yeah, but, but you're, but, but how many times could they, could they rent in that fashion during the year?
Uh, there is no limit on the number of times because um when they do rent, uh maybe um there's a uh, an individual that's maybe renting for a weekend and um then they could rent it again for somebody else the following weekend or in between. So the number of times is, is not restricted um.
Uh, Art.
All right, I'm, I'm, that's it, that, that answers my question then. There is no limit on the number of times they could rent that property during the year.
That's correct. It'll be same as the home sharing category.
Thank you.
Are we sure? I th- I, I sense a little bit of uncertainty. Mister City Manager, are you going to uh confirm everything that he says at the moment or do we need to take?
Yeah, so, so um, you know, uh, Art, thank you for the overview. Um, I, I think uh, as it relates to the, the the as-is state of uh the city code, um, these, these type of rentals where it's, it's a house that the, the owner does not live in or a property the owner does not live in, is limited to ninety days. Uh, um, anytime ninety calendar days in um, a year. Uh, as being proposed by the planning commission, uh, there, there would be a, a s- a second or, or, or a third class of properties um into the ordinance, um, that are called secondary residences. There, there'd be up to ten permits given for those secondary residences. And for someone that obtained one of those ten permits, they would not be bound by the ninety days. They would have, they, they could rent that property as frequently as they liked um, uh, year round um, up to three hundred sixty-five days. Uh, and because it's a short-term rental that we're talking about, this is not like a typical um property where there would be uh, a, a long-term lease or not. These are all rentals that would be under thirty days. Um, my, my understanding with most uh of these short-term rentals, it's certainly much less than thirty days. And I think in direct answer to uh Councilmember Valentine's question, um, there could be many um renters going through uh, a given property uh throughout the year. Um, Art, di- di- did I misstate any of that?
No, you, that's correct, uh, City Manager Eric Lee. Uh, there's no limit. If you rent, you could rent it uh one day. Um, per person, it could be three hundred sixty-five times, or you could rent it for thirty days to each individual, then that could be twelve times a year, so, and everything in between.
And that would only be for these ten properties that, that obtain permits.
Yes, because they would be treated just like the home sharing, which um is the type of of short rental where the owner uh lives on a property. And they may be out uh for two weeks on vacation, then they're allowing that their property to be used for a rental, for a short-term rental.
Thank you. Councilman Valentine, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Are you comfortable, Councilwoman Valentine?
Well, I'm not comfortable with the concept. I don't uh, you know, my, my feeling about that kind of rental is that it's not advantageous to a community when you have um, uh, that frequent uh, uh, the property being re- rented that frequently. Um, you're going to have um, a constant impact to different people all during the year. And you know, we're the city of good neighbors and you know, our communities are are cohesive in a sense. And I think that destroys the cohesion of a community because now you're, you're just basically using your house as a um as a, as a, as, as, as a vehicle for rental units. That's, that's, that's really, it, it really doesn't promote um the enhancement of the community, in my view.
Okay, so I made the motion to introduce. If, if possible, I could retract it and there could be further study and you could provide a feedback. Or we could do it now and then we can revisit this and, and strengthen it or take a different approach.
I don't, I don't see the, the reason for changing what we already have.
Uh, through the chair, um, Ms. Valentine, you have to remember, planning commission did not do this on their own. This came as a directive from the City Council to change it.
Yeah, uh, to the chair?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, cuz just uh, uh, remember that um, that is a few residents that live right here in the city that have a second home, uh, that express the concern that we were putting a, a limit of the ninety days of people that do not live in Hawthorne, for those absentee landlords, right? That people were just buying property for investment, but this it was kind of different situation that we have a few that live in Hawthorne, they make Hawthorne their home, they have a second home that they would be able to rent it more often than, than say, a, a long-term lease, right? Cuz they wanted to, to do a RMB uh, in a way, um, because they would not be able to pay the mortgage if they, if they were renting the place the, the way it is.
Does this uh?
So we gave some directive to the city coun- to the planning commission to look at it, and then I think there was some hearing done. And that is where we are going to, i- it's not for everybody.
Um, Mayor Potem?
Yeah.
Um, so I do remember, it was a handful of individuals and we wanted to make that accommodation.
Exactly, because they're residents, yes.
We like to give our specific residents who decided to buy within the city of Hawthorne that opportunity to be able to, to take advantage of uh, an opportunity here because it's our Hawthorne residents, but um, and they're invested in our community because they're from our community, correct?
Correct, correct. That's what we want to protect them.
But there could be, you know, foreign investors or people from other cities around from Palo's Verdes or rental, whatever, you know, people who live up on the hill that might wanna come and take advantage of the city. And uh, you know, they're not invested in the community and they wanna maybe have some of these uh some of these uh residences and lend them out, so. Uh, Mayor Potem, I'm going to ask you, do you feel comfortable that this excludes those people?
I'm, I'm confident with it because you know, uh, I read it and I studied and uh, since you know, I was on the planning commission meetings when they, when they vote and uh, you know, and then we have all the hearings, so I was there all the time, listen. So uh, and then uh, the concern was brought to us from right there. Uh, some of the citizens came and talked with uh, uh, during the city council meeting and that's why we listened to their concerns. And then we decide to tell the, the planning commission to look what's the best way to accommodate uh, those residents that live in the city, spend money in the city and, and, and they invest in the city.
Okay, so my, my introduction, motion for introduction stands. So let's move on to the next item. Are you?
Uh, through the chair, may I just say, make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't like the unlimited nature of it. Uh, Mister Bashmakian said that there could be as many as three hundred and sixty-five persons going through the property in a year. I don't like that unlimited nature. We're going to have a situation where people are renting their property for a week, two weeks, three weeks, um, unlimited numbers of people going through ne- through the neighborhood changing the character of the neighborhood, basically, uh, depending on how many. And, and you're, you're going to have ten permits a year, but that will, that will start adding up over years. And then you're, you're really going to be changing the character of your residential neighborhoods, and I don't, I don't think that's what you want.
Yeah, I think you can revisit this issue um after a six months or a year to see if it is in fact changing the nature of the neighborhood.
Can we give it that opportunity?
Yes.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, uh, we'll just, we'll just take a wait and see approach.
Okay, um. Item number twenty, ordinances.
Um, ordinance number twenty-two oh eight, second reading, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California approving amendments to Municipal Code Section two point four four zero seven six regarding continuous recruitment and selection. Entry level for adoption.
I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote, roll call.
Councilmember Watt?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Taeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Mister City Manager, your consent calendar, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I have items twenty through, twenty-two through twenty-six on my consent calendar.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded uh, moved by Councilwoman Valentine, seconded by Mayor Potem Montero. Please vote, roll call.
Councilmember Watt?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Taeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and Council. The vote reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Mister, Mister City Attorney?
Uh, yes, I have items number twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
I move.
Second.
Okay, it's uh I mo- I made the motion, Councilwoman Valentine made the second. Uh, please vote, roll call.
Councilmember Awad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Taeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Uh, yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Alright, uh, Councilmember uh Hadarawat? Community Garden Initiative, Community Art Show Presentation, go ahead, Councilmember.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, so it was, you know, sitting down with um our Parks and Rec. Commission and some of the members there, um, they they had, first, they they have this wonderful art show that they're filming now with our Channel twenty-two. Um, and it's to create a program that they, the children and the residents here in Hawthorne can take advantage of. While we're dealing with this pandemic being stuck inside and not having these public outings and public events like we used to. Uh, so it's a way for us through our Channel twenty-two cable to still have that sense of community. Uh, and and provide these extracurricular activities, uh especially with art, just to brighten up. Um, everyone's day, uh it never hurts to have some art. So I wanted to bring the two individuals behind uh the Community Art Show uh presentation, and who they've been working with, and the Parks and Rec Foundation. To kind of shed light on this wonderful idea that they've been pushing, and I think they've they've just finished their first series. Uh, in addition to that, the Community Garden Initiative um is also an idea coming out from. Well, the same group, uh and I I really think, and I'm gonna have them present it, I really think this Community Garden Initiative utilizing. Uh, abatement spaces that are not used to create these community gardens. It's 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 an amazing concept that uh as Danielle and Dulce say um kind of go into it further. It's it's a very progressive idea that could really resolve and solve quite a few issues. Um, at least the first step towards um that we're facing here in in the city and in the region when it comes to. Shortness of food, um creating jobs, as well as housing opportunities and things of that nature, like it's it's time to. Think more creatively and as a community. Uh, and I think these are wonderful ideas, so with that, um, I wanted to see if Danielle and Dulce are on. Are online, if I can have them uh. Present, item thirty-one.
Yes, thank you so much, um, Councilmember Awad. Um, my name is Danielle Marquez, and I have the privilege of sitting on the Parks and Rec Commission. Um, alongside my wonderful commissioners, um, under the direction of the amazing Kiwanobui and Von Norris. So we have been collaborating and working on a project with our community members, Hawthorne City Cable. And our Hawthorne Arts Foundation, um, to bring our community members' art at home. And it has been a privilege to work with Dulce Stein, who's the brainchild of art at home. Um, and if anyone is looking, we just finished our first fundraiser, and as um Councilmember Awad mentioned. Our first series, um, we just finished filming on Mon- on Monday. Um, and we are looking forward to filming more and bringing more arts at home to our community member. Um, a hundred percent of the fundraiser proceeds goes to artists teaching the lessons. And if anyone in the audience would like to help in expanding this program, you can donate to the Hawthorne Parks and Rec Foundation. Um, for the Art at Home program, and you can follow us along on our journey at the latest information on Instagram. At Art at Home TV. Um, Art at Home is, as I mentioned, the brainchild of Dulce Stein, who is going to tell us a little bit more about the program.
Good evening. Uh, it is a privilege to stand before my beloved Hawthorne City Council. My name is Dulce Stein, and I'm a Hawthorne stakeholder for the last thirty years. I have served on the boards of the Hawthorne Libraries, the Women's Club, and the Westburn School District Advisory Committees. As well as the Chief Curator for the Hawthorne Community Gallery a few years back. Today, I want to express my gratitude to Commissioner Danielle Marquez and the Parks and Rec Fine Arts Commission. For giving me the opportunity to share my vision of the Art at Home project. Their support is priceless. The mission of the Arts at Home TV project is quite simple. Is to provide quiet comfort, education, art, and community through our local TV station. While at the same time, we help support our struggling artists as we remain safe at home, as ordered by Governor Newsom. These are trying times, and we are grateful to have the opportunity. To bring a little bit of sa- sunshine on a cloudy day. Thank you very much for your time and your support.
And then this is Danielle again, um, and you know, if anyone in council, um, we were hoping that if anyone in council would like to support this program. Um, our Art at Home program and the expansion of it. Um, we would love it if you would be interested in furthering enriching this with your stipends. Um, you're open and welcome to support this program, and um we look forward to continuing to serve, thank you.
Um, this is a, this is a uh Councilwoman Valentine. Uh, yes, thank you for the presentation, um, as you know, I I was a big supporter and still am a big supporter of the Arts in Hawthorne. And um I'm very happy to hear about your program, and um I would, I am very much interested in supporting it in any way, in any way I can.
Through the chair. To the chair, can you hear me? Wake up.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, uh, you know, these are two great ladies, they do a lot of work in the city, they're always involved in all kinds of stuff. And um, and I like uh Danielle's gardening, I am a, I'm a bit of a gardener myself. So I think that's a beautiful idea, and I and I hope it um takes off, and so you got my support.
Thank you.
Let me know when you guys are doing something, I'd like to come over and check it out.
We would love that, thank you so much, Mister Dulce.
Uh, to the chair? Okay. Alright, uh, hi Dulce and Danielle, thank you for coming, um. I know you guys for, I don't know, more than ten years. Uh, doing a very good work for our community, especially, you know, Danielle, that we have a long history. Uh, doing uh community gardening at the school sites, right? That's what you started, and then you brought it to the city and to the, to the Parks and Rec Commission, so. Uh, I'm glad to see that you continue to put your talent into our community and to provide. A sense of pride, right? Because gardening and art are two most precious stuff that we can do in our lifetime. Uh, you know, for our own mental health. So those are kind of the things that we wanna promote out there to our community, because like I said, this pandemic, you know, have a lot of people locked at home. So there is something that they can do, you know, with a few plans, you know, even like on the small porch, or even the. On the back of their home or garage, they can create their own little garden. So it's good to see that you guys are out there promoting art and gardening, and I think that's uh wonderful, and keep doing a good job. And I'm all supportive, just send me the information, and you might get a check.
Thank you so much for this support.
Yeah.
We so appreciate it.
Alright.
And uh, cut, kind of with that, oh sorry, it leads into. Um, the second part of the presentation, uh and the initiative of the Community Garden Initiative. Um, utilizing the abatements, uh which is also coming from the Parks and Rec side, um, and Danielle. Uh, if you wanna go ahead and take that idea away as well?
Yes, thank you again, um, so I would like for a moment everyone to imagine the sides of the freeways. This green space can be cultivated differently, but it's not suited for commercial or standard residential properties. So let's for a moment consider growing something else. Community gardens provide an opportunity to reconnect with nature while creating a self-sufficient supply of nutritious, fresh foods. Our abatements provide an ample space to reimagine what can be cultivated there, so I appreciate that. And then another possibility for these same abatements. Um, to echo the concerns of many of our residents who's, who voiced their opinions tonight. On the, on the sweeps. Um, I'd like you to imagine and what we can do with the these abatements. With health and safety being at the forefront of people's minds recently. I would like us to please consider, I'd like council to please consider, our unhoused neighbors. These same abatements can be used to provide transitional supportive housing for our most vulnerable neighbors. These micro-communities provide shelters to displace neighbors in their area. The temporary shelters can be solar-powered and built on the sides of the freeways where other buildings would not be conducive. I'm asking council to consider these transitional sho- shelters to support our neighbors with the greatest needs.
And and another unique aspect to it all, as as we were discussing it, is now for the community gardens, as. We should kind of, what's it called, re-envision or. Transform them into these community garden spaces. Now, what we're doing is not only creating a, almost like a food bank for the city itself to start giving out to the community. To kind of help address this food shortage, um, and for the loss of jobs here in the city, but at the same time. Working with the United Farm Workers Union, it it's a unique idea to create, to give the unhoused. That may be suffering a purpose, to rebuild themselves, to address this issue. It's it's a simple way to really. Make it a catalyst, uh and start trying to find a way, it's a very hard issue to deal with, um, everything that we're facing now, it's very hard. But coming together as a community and thinking of these ways to better utilize our space. And at the same time benefiting the community and creating jobs and giving people purpose again. That's the whole point of it, uh and instead of having them just there as bushes or dying trees. You're creating life in two different ways. Um, and the United Farm Workers uh would help with the whole structure and kind of implementing how. The transition, the transition from abatement space to community gardens, and then working with. The individuals there to create this job program. It's always easier to have the union, having union backing to have this kind of structure implemented, uh so we're not like treading on. Unwalked water, they've they've worked with these kind of individuals before, they've worked with these communities before, so they know the best way to move and progress forward with it. So I I thought it was an amazing idea, and um, you know, to having this open dialogue to see what everyone else thinks is why we're here today.
So I would like to ask a question about the the concept. I I I understand the Community Garden Initiative, because we had them in New York when I lived in New York, and they still do.
Yeah.
Very successful, um, in in places where you have urban and urban environment. You have an area set aside where people can actually grow uh fruits and vegetables for themselves, it's a very successful concept. What I don't understand is how you're tying that in with the homeless, in with 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 the need for um. Uh, for 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 figuring out how to hand, how to handle the homeless situation, I'm I'm not seeing the connection.
That's a great question.
There'll be, oh, go ahead.
Oh, may I? Oh, that's a really great question, thank you so much, Councilman uh Valentine. All right, we would like to draw attention to the fact that these abatements are not conducive to other properties. And so by considering our unhoused neighbors and what health and safety means on a broader level. Um, to include them, we are looking at these abatements as a solution to their, some of their displaced needs. And the community garden concepts are, as he, as Councilmember Awad was saying, are to address some of the job issues. Because that's a need too, um, and so by providing jobs at these community gardens for our displaced neighbors. They will be able to um have steady income, and in addition to that. Gain new skills for, once they're out of their turn, for once they outgrow their micro-communities.
But you're not.
So it's essentially kind of creating.
But you're not suggest.
Would work the.
Councilwoman, uh, Councilmember Hadar? Go ahead, just your next Councilwoman, uh, your next Councilwoman, uh Valentine, okay? Go ahead, sir.
To to kind of give out like more, to address your question, uh, a little more clearly, it's. We're providing a source of revenue for these individuals to help work the land. For these community gardens, they will be given a wage. For working within the community gardens. So that's how the whole like job creation, getting them back on their feet and giving the purpose is implemented, is that they would be helping. Yeah, working the land, uh becoming one of the community garden farmers. So you see how kind of. Intertwines?
I understand, I just don't understand how it's helping them find housing.
Part of it would be that, in addition to the community gardens, we would provide temporary transitional housing. Um, that the areas are just wide enough to put tiny homes in that area. Um, another community member was concerned about high-density developers, you know, taking advantage of our cities. This aspect would take that consideration away, because no one can build, no one else can build in these abatement areas. Um, the truth of the matter is, is that many of our unhoused neighbors are already living there. And it is a shame that we are having brush fires, because these neighbors would just like a warm meal, or to not be cold at night. So we're, I'm asking City Council to really reimagine what's possible in these areas of underutilized land. And see how we can address being more eco-friendly and more community-friendly.
What areas are you speaking of, Danielle?
So the abatements are the side of the freeways, um, the four oh five has many abatements. That unhoused neighbors are currently utilizing, um, of the side, the one oh five as well has um abatement areas that people are dwelling. Um, and so it's taking these same areas that are being lived in and making them more safe. Making them more hygienic and creating a sense of safety for these people, so that they can actually transition. Um, into, into our communities again. Because many of our unhoused neighbors were actually living amongst us, and that's why I do like to address them as our unhoused neighbors. Because we are, after all, the city of good neighbors.
Oh, I I have a comment, just a question like, uh, I mean, that that appears to be Caltrans property. So how do you, Danielle and I guess Dulce? Uh, what, how do you, why, how do you see the city get involved if it's Caltrans property in their jurisdiction?
That's an excellent question, and I also would encourage the City Council to support us in finding a partnership that we can collaborate and make sure that. We can better utilize these these um Caltrans lands, because as I mentioned, it is a safety concern. Considering that there has been fires started in the recent weeks because of this, these, these issues. And the fact that the city is not making any changes, the sweeps are not a solution.
But those are Caltrans properties, so if it's the State of California's Transportation Authority that owns it, what what jurisdiction?
So when it comes to, when it comes to community gardens, oh, hold on, when it comes to community garden aspects. Um, so you can work with Caltrans, and it's, and a lot of these union groups have been the exact same thing, where it's like this beautification projects. So when there is an initiative like this, you can create a partnership where Caltrans will give you access to their abatements. For these kind of, it's a beautification project, so it's it's a, it's an easier ask than that you might think. It's it's very easy and plausible, cuz a lot of other c- companies in the region, they'll adopt that abatement. And they'll beautify it with flowers and things of that nature. It's a basically the same concept where now you're just making a community garden, like the abatement here, we've done the same thing on the prairie side. Where we've adopted that side of the abatement, and Caltrans allows us to go in there and put flowers and things like that, and it helps the beautification side of it.
Well, yeah, I I can see, I can see that, I can see that, but um tying it into the other aspect, the second aspect of the presentation, um, I'd just like to see.
That's more of a vision dream, that's like further stretched out, um, but the first step would be, the main focus would be like the community garden aspect. And the envision or the utopia would be in years down the line, it would transform into this. But the initial part is, the more focused on creating these community gardens.
Okay.
And then creating jobs for the unhoused individuals there, and beautifying the abatements and limiting the brush fires.
Okay, thank you, um.
Through the chair, Mayor Potem, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, um, actually, you know, the, um, the idea about, uh, create community gardens. You know, on the side of freeway is not a bad idea because they have done that sometime in the past, um. In some of the, uh, I forgot one of the states, but. We know that, um, we would have to create, eh, eh, like Mr. Hedar said, a partnership. Uh, not just with the Caltrans, but also with the LA County, uh, you know, the non-incorporated areas. And the metro and all of all of these agencies coming together, uh, could potentially. We can see, uh, a side of the freeway on one oh five and and four oh five. And even, uh, to be something, something fruitful, right? Something that could, uh, could generate some type of. Uh, community garden that can start with, uh. Because basically, you you could have a concept of those community garden. With some transition, temporary transitional housing for for the homeless, but that that it's it's it's. It's a conversation that we would have to sit down with all these partners, especially now we know. Caltrans is not, it's not easy, uh, agencies to deal with because, you know, sometimes we have to go clean up their own, their own territory. They don't even clean it up. So so we will have to bring them on board with with the, with the metro and and the LA County. Uh, especially the non-incorporated areas because a lot of these encampments is being done in non-incorporated areas of 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 Hawthorne. Uh, you know, uh, right there on Del Air and and the, uh, uh, Boja Park area that is part of Gardena and LA County. So all these encampment that is showing up, uh, is not per se right in the middle of the seat of Hawthorne, but it's it's on the. Periphery, you know, that's coming in to Hawthorne. So that is what we need to deal with. All these agencies have to come together, uh, to address that, uh, that specific plan that, uh, and and it's it's uninvited ideas. Uh, because, you know, community gardens, you know, if it's like Ms. Valentine in New York, they do it on the, on the rooftop, right? Uh, and then, uh, if we would have some of the developer that have some of these vacant lands. To give them, give us some lands, we can create more community gardens, right? Green space, uh, out there, out there. So, uh, because I see that, you know, a few people owns a lot of land in this city, so maybe they can donate some land for us to do some green space also. Because we need, we need more green, because, you know, you see how the fires, the hurricanes, earthquakes. All these are natural disasters and because of global warming. So we need, we need to do more, uh, goo- good air. Good, good, uh, you know, plants generate oxygen, right?
Mr. City Attorney? Mr. City Attorney, is this something you could research for us? Um, I know it involves.
Yes.
Is this something you could research for us because, uh, it involves cooperation with with both, uh. Uh, all these entities that were mentioned, Caltrans, LA County, Metro. Okay, I mean, I believe, I think it's something look worth looking into.
Yes, we'll get a report back to you.
So thank you, Dulce. Thank you, Danielle, and thank you, Councilmember Awad.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Through the chair, Mr. Mayor?
Sir, go ahead.
Um, I asked our city attorney if I could read one final, uh, public comment. My apologies, it was sent to me as a attachment, so I missed it.
Okay, go ahead, sir. Go ahead.
Dear Hawthorne City Council, my name is Eric Portheo and I'm a resident of Hawthorne for twenty-five plus years. I'm writing you today because our city has been great greatly affected by COVID nineteen and the economical impact that comes with it. As a member of Hawthorne community, I have an obligation to our city to bring forward the wrongdoings within our community and bring a voice to those affected. Most of, most of, if not all, citizens of the city of Hawthorne have been greatly affected. We as citizens of Hawthorne have done our absolute best to follow CDC and state guidelines to protect ourselves and our community. Following guidelines is the fastest way possible to reopen our ci- city safely while lessening the chance of further closures. Unfortunately, Coast Fitness Gym in Hawthorne believes that they are above state mandated or even federally mandated guidelines for gyms. Coast Fitness continues to operate while violating every guideline set forth by any governing body. But to my knowledge, there has been several positive cases of COVID nineteen that are believed to have spread at Coast Fitness Gym in Hawthorne. Members have informed the owner Jerry Jeng Gochin about their infections and Jerry has completely ignored it. Coast Fitness does not require wearing a face mask. Members are not required to social distance. They can work out inside, which goes against state regular guidelines. Coast Fitness completely maxes out the capacity of visitors allowed in the gym. Please drive by to see the number of cars parked in front of the gym. The law is po- packed. Coast Fitness continued to charge members during the pandemic closures, which is not legal according to California Civil Code, Section eighteen twelve point eighty-five C. If members did not pay for the months of the closures, they were sent to collections, most without notice. Coast Fitness also disregards any health conditions you may have. In Coast Fitness' own agreement, they state a member can counsel if they have a health condition that does not allow them from using the facilities physically. Coast Fitness is now completely ignoring their own agreements and sending those with health conditions to collections. They have no standing in charging customers cancellation fees and to charge them during closures. Also, if you do not have the money to counsel, they. They will continue to charge you until you are sent to collections. So if you've lost your job due to COVID nineteen, have respiratory health issues. That do not allow you to go to the gym or work in close environments with other people, doesn't matter, Coast Fitness will send you to collections. We can just imagine all the citizens of Hawthorne going through such a difficult time just to receive a notice in the mail for collections of hundreds of dollars. Now, if you want that, if you want that collection removed, you must pay up the money. Collections could stop somewhere from finding a place to live, getting a student loan, receiving some type of financial help. Collections now, collections on your credit history can be devastating, especially during these difficult times. After months of feuding with Coast Fitness for wrongfully charging me during closures and refusing to close my membership. I finally caught Jerry Jeng Gochin in person and handed him a letter from my doctor and explained the situation. I told him how I lost my job due to pandemic and was unable to come up with the money. What Jerry offered is for me to work a full day cleaning his gym. Even after showing him I have health issues that could be made worse with the COVID nineteen, his only option to pay in erroneous charges. Is to work it off cleaning his gym while being exposed to hundreds of masked, less people working outdoors. Outdoors in closed quarters. A person going through some serious hardship could die from Jerry's greed and malpractices. What Coast Fitness and specifically the owner Jerry is a parent. We as a community cannot allow business like these to continue without some form of repercussions and future regulations. They're completely disregarding the city of Hawthorne's hard work and desire to get us out of COVID nineteen and economic crisis. I hope the city of Hawthorne can create some form of repercussions for bad actors like Coast Fitness. They're practicing like it is the Wild West and there's no sheriff in town. Hawthorne must create some form of regulation so business do, businesses do not take advantage of an already horrible situation. Sincerely, Eric Portheo, City of Hawthorne. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I am aware that, uh, the LA County Department of Public Health is aware of this, is that correct? Mr. City Attorney?
Uh, yes, it's under their jurisdiction or they they said that they're taking care of it.
Can you send us a legal confidential with any background that we need to know as a city?
Sure.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be long, brief, or whatever there is, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. All right, thanks folks. Um, the next item for presentation. Is, uh, creation of ad hoc committee on homelessness. Councilmember Awad, go ahead. Sir, Councilmember Awad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh. Now, a- as we individually on this council hold our own views that may or may not agree with everything that is brought to us. Which includes the presentation we had at the start of this meeting. Um, our number one feel as a body should be that anyone within our city. Should have the right to present their ideas, their case or grievances irrespective of where the city stands on it. As community members and as city residents, this is what our council meetings are for. They have the right to do. Now, the topic of homelessness and what we've heard today and from the past weeks and over the past few months. Um, this is, this is a wake-up call and we should be looking at homelessness as much more of an issue than we have in the past. And part of it is based upon the economy and COVID and what I anticipate to be more people not being able to pay their rent. And being forced to finding some shelter. So we have to find some way to work as a community to reduce or eliminate homelessness. Now, i- it is a huge endeavor to take on. Uh, a city like us, this, you know, six square miles. But no, of course, we can't eliminate or solve the issue for the whole state, but at least we can take the first step in doing so. But this is very important and there is a light at the end of the tunnel for all of this. So the idea was, I was sitting down with Eric, is to have this emergency temporary ad hoc committee. Be set with two individuals from the council that would chair, that would co-chair the committee. Um, service providers that deal with the unhoused communities in addition to city staff. A representative from the business community, a representative from the residential side. And in addition to some of the groups that we heard, uh. Today, um, this way it shows that the city is taking the first step in collaborating with the entire community. And bringing in the resident side and the business side and the city itself. To at least take this next step within our five-year plan, uh, our homeless plan, to really be the driving force. To making a change. Um, a- and this way, all of us together and all these separate groups and entities. Well, w- we can actually look at the same picture. We can kind of go through the struggle together because there's beauty in the struggle. I've always loved that quote, and this is essentially the same thing. Uh, if if we address it together, then we're all fighting the same battle. We all see the same picture. We can move together. Instead, right now, it's more of like a divide and conquer kind of feel. It's it's. It's disheartening. This way. It's putting Hawthorne actually on the map for taking this creative initiative step. Um, we're looking at these community garden initiatives, these art programs, like we are, we are now becoming that city. Like we are, as long as we keep moving the way we are. Will be the, like, the beacon of the South Bay. Um, and and we can show them that working together, you can work with the community to address this issue. You can have these open discussions and these open conversations. Yes, it might be hard at times. Yes, they're touchy subjects. But if you never have the conversations or even at a, just sit at the table, then would you ever see progress? No. So the idea is to set up this temporary ad hoc committee. With all these individuals representing the community from different parts of it. And create some kind of ideas and policies that we can bring back to the council body. And then again, from there, as a whole, decide of which way to move, which way to go. But at least we're all in it together. And just from everything we've seen from the past two months and and residents saying that. You know, we just want to have five minutes here, or this, we want to talk to here, don't throw us to staff. I mean, they're right. Like, I feel bad even for having staff all the time, like, taking on the brunt hit of everything. It's it's not really like their, it's not their fault, and they shouldn't be taking on the brunt hit of every complaint. When we are the decision makers. So why not come together and work with them? And yeah, we're we're shielding our our employees. We're shielding everyone else because we are the ones making the decisions. So why not be in those meetings, creating the drive?
I have, I have a question.
That's all they.
Hi, I have a question. So we already have a task force that goes out comprised of the police force, public works. And, um, uh, Jesse Ramirez.
Included.
Pardon me?
They'll be included. It's it's also a part of the committee.
Let me.
That's the city portion of it.
All right, just, uh, let her just complete the.
I'm I'm already, we're, we already have. A task force that goes out, the police, public works, Jesse Ramirez. Um, we have, uh, I I assume other members of staff, parks and rec. Um, they already go out. We have a very robust program of. Offering housing services and wraparound services for homeless people that we encounter. So what would this task force do that we are not already doing?
So what it's doing is, so basically it's come, taking what we have now as the city, that's going to be the foundation, that task force. And now incorporating council members on there in addition to representatives from the business district, from the residential side. And all these advocacy groups. I mean, we're all, we're missing, there's a lot of voices that we're missing. Um, and it's kind of like walking and trying to make decisions in the dark. Yes, we've done a lot with the task force. But I feel that more can be done if you're now including individuals that are making decisions to be in those meetings. And at the same time, you're having the ear of the business district now. Now you're having representatives from the residential side. We necessarily don't really know what each section is suffering with. Like, we we we, we have this overall, we generalize. What we think they're being affected with, but every part of our city is affected in a very different way. And having representatives in those meetings, while the ci- the city is still the driving force, the task force we have is still the foundation. It's not getting like out of the city's hand, but it's a way to incorporate the entire community now. In this push.
Through the chair?
Yes, uh, Mayor Potem.
Uh, thank you. Um, well. I am glad that, uh, you know, Mr. Hedar Awad i- i- is is bringing this homeless issue now to upfront. After five years, but let me tell you, this morning, I attend, uh, a homeless task force meeting. Uh, the Hawthorne homeless task force. We have people from, uh, USC. We have people from business community. We have people coming from the, uh, be- behavioral health service. From the clinic in, uh, in El Seg- in, uh, El Segundo over there, um, P- Pacifica House. Uh, the, uh, parents that have the women shelters. Uh, we have Pat was, uh, Pat for homeless. We have the Laza was there. Uh, we had a different component of every single. Economic sector per se, from from the education to medical, to mental health, to business. All day this morning. It was, uh, and you know, Vaughn is is on, so he can add on that. But we had maybe more than twenty-five people discussing Hawthorne homeless. It was just about Hawthorne and all these servers coming together to work together with Jesse and Vaughn. And 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 then the police officer and Mr. Saldaña Junior. So all of them coming together from, like I said, it's it's a whole service. So we can still, uh, add anything that you would like to add on that task force. So then we do not be, uh, you know, reinvent the wheel. Uh, because like I said, uh, for these past five years, you know, you guys didn't do nothing about the homeless. And then suddenly, because of this election, and I was the only councilman. That when I got elected, decided to go to the South Bay Car Homeless Task Force. So we could bring dollar to Hawthorne because nobody was representing Hawthorne on that table. To bring money from Laza, from LA County to help the city of Hawthorne. So I commend you guys now, you step up because his election. Year, so everybody now is trying to help the homeless. Uh, but it's good. We do need to help the homeless. We need to listen to the, to the pros and the cons. So if the, even the street LA watch, South Bay, if they want to join the, the, the task force, they're welcome. So that the homeless task force, basically, we have two. One, that is the city homeless task force, Hawthorne homeless task force, and we have the South Bay Car. Homeless Task Force that met, that meets twice, uh, every other month to deal with the whole South Bay area. About nineteen cities talking about homeless, how we can help together. You know, from the Beach City to Inglewood to to Long Beach, we come all together to discuss homeless on 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 Spa Eight. So so we have these two homeless task forces right here in our community, so we just, if. I would love to see is you bring more of those people to the task force so he, they can be a complete set. If you're thinking there is a deficit in there. But this morning, I had, you know, very good Zoom meeting with more than twenty-five people. Represent all sector of business dealing with the homeless issue today, this morning.
Now, that's a very good point and, um, a- and I'm glad you bring that up. But as we, as we tend to see, um, when you come at it from a regional standpoint. Again, not every city is built the same. Not every community is built the same. So it's, 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 and it's kind of like the divide and conquer aspect that I want to try and eliminate for our city, uh, instead of attacking one another. Instead of attacking one another, instead of trying to placate or have egos, it's really about how can we focus on the city itself? Um, I, I appreciate the South Bay Cog, I've been in those meetings before. Uh, but it is not focused on one city, it's a broader discussion. Cause I've been in those meetings, I have, I really have. Uh, so in those discussions, it's not, you're not taking like, okay, this part of Hawthorne specifically. Is being addressed, or this part of Hawthorne's business community is addressed. It's more of a regional approach. Having a committee set up where we're bringing in not only ourselves as a city to the table, but the community. It's not that hard, um, and if it's the work you guys don't, you know, it's the work that intimidating, it only needs two council members. And, um, it's, and it's for the homelessness issue, um, that's why we do the turkey giveaway. That's why we move forward with the homeless veteran. Committee I have on my own, so I have been working on homelessness issues prior. It's just that I don't think you were ever at the table. It was at one point myself, and it was sad, and it made things very difficult. But now it's working together, and instead of trying to create. Animosity or any kind of hate, it's more on compassion and empathy. The reason why it's being discussed now, it's a, it's COVID. You, how many, the eviction moratorium, the, uh, discussions on affordable housing. Why do you think this is now being a more brought up issue? Because the world around us has changed. And we have to adapt. Is the conversation going to defer differentiate as we progress forward? Yes. Was Zoom now being how we're going to hold our council meetings ever going to be discussed, but until recently? That happened to be around, uh, election? No. But it's because of our surrounding environment. And it's, it's basically, it's a wholehearted, let's come together approach. And it's not that, it's really not that difficult of a thing to set up. I'll, I'll take on the majority of the work, that's no problem. Um, but to, why start this ego and just why not just work on this community effort?
There is no way, uh, Mr. Heda, there is no ego. I, what I'm saying is, you can, all the ideas that you have. Bring it to the homeless task force and let's, let's string that home, the, the Hawthorne. Uh, homeless task force that we have already in place, because you have almost all the. All the department, you know, from the, from the police department, from housing department, from part and rec.
That's what it is.
The city office.
Combining the two.
So just bring them on and we'll combine them and string the, the task force even to do a better, a better job. If you think that, that we.
That's what it is.
There, but we've been, but we've been doing, we've been addressing homeless issue on a council base. So bring your ideas to that task force so we can build it up, we can string it. Uh, so we can be much more effective, if that's the word that you're looking at. So it's welcome. I'm not saying there is no ego, because we need to, we need to deal with homeless issue. We need to give them shelter, we need to give them housing, we need to give them food, we need to be able to give them jobs, mental health, healthcare. All of those things combined. So, so that is what I'm saying, bring it on to the task force, so then we can build a better. And effective wo- uh, teamwork that can all be on the same pace.
Correct, uh, and now city manager Eric Lee, if you can, um, jump in real quick, I have a couple of questions, so from our discussion. Um, so, uh, initially, the, the whole concept was to, in a sense. Take the Hawthorne Task Force, which we already have, and now implement. Council member decision makers as well as the community into this ad hoc committee, is that correct? Essentially, that's what the whole underlying was?
Well, s- so, so, I, 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 yeah, take a step back, I think the, you know, when you and I were discussing this. Um, the, the idea of having, uh, the council be able to deal with some of the, you know. I, I think admittedly, you know, confrontational issues that are occurring at the council meetings. Um, you know, if the council wanted to establish, uh, an ad hoc, uh, committee of, you know, less than three council members, where we don't have Brown Act issues. To, uh, for noticing and, 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 and these two council members could work with. Uh, either, uh, key members of staff, um, and, and key stakeholders from the community to bring back. Um, the potential, uh, policy, um, recommendations to the full council. Um, th- that that might be an appropriate way, um, or maybe an alternative way, um. To, to deal with some of the issues that are, that are confronting the council, um, with, specifically, specifically as it relates to these homeless encampments. Um, you know, I, I would think that, you know, for one, the, the, the city has, uh, an adopted five-year plan to address homelessness. Homelessness in the community, uh, as one of those, uh, stated goals within the plan, it's to. Uh, it's in collaboration with our regional partners to get homelessness to functional zero. Uh, which acknowledges the fact that homelessness is, um, uh, happens for a variety of reasons, it's very complex, but. I- if, if, um, if we can get homelessness to functional zero, we don't have long-term chronic homelessness. Uh, that's in the, the city's goal to do. Um, and so as, uh, as the city has implemented this plan, um, and staff i- is working to fulfill it. If there's, i- if there are, are, are new things that come up, I mean, obviously when the plan was adopted a couple of years ago. Uh, it didn't presume that, um, COVID would happen to the city, um, or the, the region or our world. Um, so for that reason, or any other reasons, um, that, you know, the, the council would say, you know, maybe we need to, uh, take, take a different. Um, look at our plan and, and, um, and how are we going to do that? I think, um, you know, my, my recommendation would be to have the, the, um. Uh, the ad hoc committee focused on work like that, uh, which is really at the policy level, not on the. Um, uh, on the, the, the level of, you know, what service providers we're using, or.
Correct.
How the operation is being conducted. Uh, I think that's probably the, the best use of, of the council's time. Uh, the upside of that process being, you know, if, if an ad hoc committee of the council, um, you know, were studying this issue and came back with some recommendations. Um, there would already be, you know, some concurrence, at least from some members of the council, that, uh, that these. Uh, recommendations are holding water and it's not, uh, an extraneous, um, i- input coming into the discussion. But it's, it's something that's already been reviewed and vetted. And I, I hope that answers the question.
That, that, that was, uh, you actually did a better job explaining than I did, uh, but yeah, that, that's essentially it. It's on the grander scale of. Taking the new created issues that were, our environment is facing with in this ever-changing world. And then addressing those separately, um, while allowing the, giving this policy push to council. Rather than the whole nitty gritty.
Alright, so. Anybody else?
So with the next steps for the, uh, what would be like the next steps for creating the, um, ad hoc?
So, so I think really it's, uh, uh, we would want, uh, uh, concurrence from the, the city council to move forward in this direction, obviously. It's, it's something that, uh, i- it's going to take some time, um, and, and effort. And we want to make sure that this is where the, the full council wants to go. Um, and, you know, absent, uh, you know, a majority, uh, you know, provide that direction. Uh, I think we will continue working, uh, with our existing adopted plan, uh, and our existing, uh, structures. Um, as far as, uh, the task force, um, locally and with the cog and, uh, the other efforts the staff is working on.
Right, is there anything else from anybody else?
So would it need a council, like, a vote now, or like, how is the? To create this ad hoc committee to kind of form? Is it like a vote we should take now? Is it like the route we should be taking? To take the, the controversial issues and have a discussion of regarding those, try and find a solution to it. Uh, while we can still have the five-year plan being implemented.
So, uh, uh, if you're asking me, I, I think that it's, you know, really, if, if something that you'd like, uh, me and the staff. Uh, to, to work, to, to help get that, that ad hoc committee stood up. And, um, and productive, we, we, we would need that direction from the council today. Or at another time, if the council wants to review this at another time. Uh, and if there's.
But I think.
Research that, um, you know, needs to happen, uh, between now and another time to, for the council to, uh, maybe have a little more information about what the options are. We could come back at another time, just to have that discussion as well.
Alright, is there any other comments from any of the council members? Council member what? I'm asking.
Yeah, I think, uh, mo- having that direction for staff to.
Council member what? I'm asking for, uh, any of their council, any other comments from any other people?
But I'm giving staff direction. Why, why is that? No one else there wanted to have a comment, so I can't give staff direction? Am I, is that out of protocol?
No, I'm just. Council members.
To the chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Mayor Proton.
My recommendation would be, it was to, uh, probably, uh, because we have. The Hawthorne Homer Task Force that is, is built of, uh, very knowledgeable people. That does research, that does the work on the field. That does understand the homeless need better than we do as po- politicians. I would, I would go back to that, uh, homeless task force. And talk to them about this idea of, of, uh, Ad Rock Committee. Uh, because policies comes from the experts. And South Bay Cog Task Force and the home, Hawthorne Homer Task Force. Uh, already, you know, giving ideas and solution of these problems. And that's the way that even South Bay Cogs, we reach out to the county, to the state, to the federal level. Even to bring money to this South Bay area. To be able to, to provide some type of relief, or even. For us of the local level to create policy how to deal with the homeless situation. And the potential evictions that is coming next, next year, so. We probably would like, I would like to, to hear from, from the expert, uh, from the field that's been going. You know, talking to the homeless and then to see what else that we can bring to them. To teach, maybe even teach us how to create good policies that is going to benefit. The citizens and the homeless and the unhoused, right? Because that's the issue right now. So, so if we don't have expert on the field. That will give us those advice, we wouldn't, we would not be able to alone to come up with policy because homeless. It's not just one particular jurisdiction, it's, it's, it's whole state, country, fed. Everybody have to, have to come together to deal with homeless issue, because Hawthorne, like, you know. We are trying, we're doing our best. Uh, and believe it or not, you know, we know that, uh, all these issues comes down is the, is the. Money and money and money and money, and what is a good policy for everybody to deal with? So it's a regional issue, it's not just a local issue, and we have to take it that way. For us to become on a spotlight, we need to listen to our own homeless task force first before we can go. Off the grid and try to do something that they might not even support.
So you are, are you making an alternate recommendation?
Actually, what the city manager mentioned was. With that task force, hold on, don't misconstrue the notion.
Council member what?
City manager.
Council member what?
Manager.
Council member what? I have the floor, I'm asking Mayor Proton.
Yeah, but you're making a lie out of what discussion there is, like, if the public is good to see this. As in that he just misconstrued what the city manager said, which he said that we would be working with the task force as our expert for advice. We're not going into the field alone.
Everybody has an opportunity to say, and now I'm asking, so you'll, you'll.
I just said it.
You'll go next, it's, it's, look, we need to follow. There's no need in interrupting your fellow council members, including myself. I've defended you when people are interrupting you. Please follow.
No, you have not.
Please follow protocol, I have, there's so many examples, there's multiple examples.
We could work on it together, Alex, you bring.
Alex Montero, are you making an alternate recommendation? Or what's?
I'm not again so in favor of anything, but what I wanted to do is first thing empower our current. Homeless Task Force to see what, what can we do? To work together, because we cannot just have this Ad Rock Committee over here, and then our homeless task force that. That understand the issue better than, than just another committee of politicians trying to create. Uh, solutions when they don't have the tools. That's what I'm saying, so we need to take, take the, take this idea to the, to the homeless task force, let's talk about it. And let tell us, okay, maybe it's a good idea to have another Ad Rock Committee. Uh, but I don't want to reinvent the wheel, because like I said, we can add what we have. Because we have a very good group of people that is, 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 is. Out there doing outreach. Accessing all the, all the resources that it's needed or lack of it. So we need to make sure that we are empowered thi- this homeless task force to be able for us. To give us recommendation to do policy changes. If we need more shelter, if we need more vouchers, if we need more affordable housing, so we know all those things. It's coming, we need those, but how are we going to do it? So, and we are not just the ones that have these brilliant ideas, we have to take those people, like, there was a lady from USC there. That she is doing research and she wants to do more research, we, we, all the, with us, with the city of Hawthorne. So, so those kind of things that we need to bring them together, so to give us. A, a product that.
That's what the hot hot committee is.
That we can live it.
Eric just said that, word for word.
But you have it, you have one twenty-five people.
We don't have council members or the community itself. We don't have the council or community members on these things.
So I'm not a council member then, so when I go to those meetings, I don't represent.
Local city, the local city, we're talking about just Hawthorne, don't talk to cog, cog's regional.
Alright guys, I need you guys.
It just, just, it's the.
One at a time, please.
The fact that you're making this a fight, it should not be.
It's not a fight. Task force is open to any council member. Open to anybody, if you don't go, it's because you do have not.
How about the, I do, but the community, where's the community?
What, bring the community, we want the community.
I need you guys to sl- slow it down, I need it, I need one at a time.
I give up.
Okay, but. Thank you.
Because I have my own.
He just said he gave up.
I know, I know how to deal with this issue, I've been doing with this issue for twenty-two years.
Okay, so we have to. But the thing is, you're, you're trying to take out other, all that you said was adding. The council members and the community staff.
I'm there.
Business area.
I'm there.
Into working with our homeless task force here in the city. Like, I don't see what's, what you're saying is not different. We're saying, bring in these community members.
You to the next homeless, the next Hawthorne homeless task.
Does not fix Hawthorne's issues.
Oh, my god.
It's not.
Alright guys, alright.
Don't be on it.
I am on it, I am on it, I'm asking you to come and join.
I'm gonna worry you one last time, if not, I'm going to recess the meeting. I need you guys, one at a time, Mayor Proton, council member what? One at a time. We can't have people interrupting, share your ideas, and, and in addition, do not attack the person. Attack the, uh, attacker, argue the ideas, please, so, let's just finalize this issue. Okay.
And I say we would have staff move forward with creating the ad hoc committee. That the city manager just laid out to us, like, and that was in working partnership with our experts within city hall, bringing in the community. Bringing in our experts, and now you're bringing in the council to the local level. And it's not, it, it's not gonna, it's not a, it's not an issue, I don't know, this, yes, yes, it's not hard. And if you want to sit along there as well, by all means, if not, don't make an issue. It's just for the community, so if that's the direction I'm trying to give, is having council members in the community. Work along with our experts and tackle the harder issues that have just arisen because of COVID. And I'm just gonna leave it at that, because it's, it's that simple.
Anything else from anybody else?
So what, uh, to the chair?
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, bring all these people to the homeless task force, and I'm there.
Okay, so I guess we're moving forward with it, then let's create the, let's move forward creating the policy. Uh, city manager, and then, um, as laid out, combining both ideas, that, the new ones that just came in now. And then we can move forward with it. Incorporating what Mr. Montero did, said, in addition to the way you laid it out, and then. Making a cohesive committee group. That actually takes in all these ideas. And now that's a working partnership.
Are you?
How am I not being interrupted every two seconds? Can I not finish my talk, or you just say two seconds ago, I'm not gonna interrupt?
Go ahead.
So, um, can I finish my statement? Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
See, it's very different now. Um, so it's, it's taking those two ideas now, and then. You being on the task force, obviously, um, and knowing what their needs are and what they kind of go through. Creating and drafting this new ad hoc committee to best serve the homeless task force that you are on. And that. And that you work with. And who else better knows that than the head guy of City Hall? So if anyone else was gonna give the opinion on what they need and how to draft this. Well, Mr. City Manager, you've heard both ideas. Taking what Alex Montero took in, his wonderful points, and incorporating into this idea to really help our Hawthorne Community Task Force.
So, uh, Mayor Protem, there's two ideas on the floor. There was, I think Councilmember what, please? Alright, there's two ideas on the floor. There's the, the sole idea that Mayor Protem Montero is making, which is to just invite all these groups to form a part of the South Bay Cog.
No, no, we can't do South Bay Cog.
The homeless task force that
Homeless Task Force.
Which we as a city council like instituted, correct? So that's your sole recommendation, is that correct, Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Okay. And then we have, uh, the other one that is fusing all both of them together, so in a sense, uh, it's creating both the new one and then the additional, so. I don't, I have not heard any concurrence on changing what we have right now, or I don't know how to describe it.
I, I would agree, I, I would agree if I, if I understood what you're sa- what you're saying. It sounds to me like you're both saying the same thing.
Exactly. It is.
But it's not, there's not
It is the same, it is the same, Ms. Councilwoman Valentine, you are absolutely one hundred percent correct in the statement you just made. Yes, it is the same thing. And yes, you are correct. It is. And why we're meddling the water? We shouldn't be. And I will agree with the statement that Ms. Valentine made on how she interpreted it. I'm going to vote on that.
No, wait, just listen, let, let, let's, let me make a clarification.
I just made my statement. Olivia Valentine made the correct statement.
Now it's my turn.
Okay.
Alright. Councilmember, Mayor Protem is suggesting, and this is not what he's saying. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor Protem, you're suggesting that we have a we have already instituted a homeless task force, which we as a city council created, correct?
Yes.
And you're saying that people be invited to it, that does not mean creating a new ad- ad hoc committee as of now, until we find out what the homeless task force recommends, is that correct?
What I'm saying is, instead of us reinventing the wheel is to bring the, the people that Mr. Hawati suggested to the homeless, to the Hoton Home Task Force for us to work together. Then it would, it would actually ma- maybe string the committee uh, to do better things. So we, because we need, we need the community people, like this from, uh, uh, Street Watch LA. They're the one that's not part of the committee. So if they wanna come join the committee, if they wanna if we wanna bring more business people into the committee, right? It's for us to begin to, of, a true dialogue per se. That, that if he's thinking that the piece, the piece of the legislation or the policies are not there. But like I said, people on the field is the one who brings those ideas for us to create policy. So if we don't listen to them and if we don't combine these two entities together, we are just going to be going from one meeting to another meeting to another meeting, instead of having all the resources together and build a castle.
So you're suggesting adding them and have them participate in an existing committee? Okay, if you want to make a motion, I'll support that. Do you want, would you like to make a motion on that?
I think the city manager had, there was issues with that kind of idea. That was why it had to be separate. There is an actual issue with combining it that way. We can't do it. Is there, is there, is that wh- why you mentioned that there is an issue with combining it in that sort of way?
To the chair. Let me, let me just
Question, hold on, hold on. He's interrupting me now, and then you're just going on high horse of saying, everyone take their turn, right? Thank you. Um, Mr. City Manager, um, during our discussion and what you just clearly said a few minutes ago, combining it in that sort of way, there's a reason why you brought it as a separate. And why was that?
So, so I, I think, you know, and, and really, I think just to reiterate, I, I think the idea that you and I talked about, at least from my perspective was, um, you know, we, we've got, um, this adopted plan by the council that is our five-year plan. And, um, th- th- this is the plan that we're working, uh, a- as a community. If there's an, uh, a desire or a need to have some type of midstream course correction, that, that's something that a, a, a group of, of the, uh, an Ad Hoc Committee of the city council uh, could, you know, do a deeper dive rather than having the full council do this. They, they could, they could look at the, the current issues we're facing uh, and, and bring back recommendations to the full council about, um, about items that could be changed. And I think that, uh, in, in doing that work, um, they would have, you know, a multitude of stakeholders, uh, that, that could help inform uh, what's going on. I think that there's, um, certainly, um, elements of our, our, our existing task force that, that, that could feed, um, inputs into, to that Ad Hoc Committee. Um, and so I think it's, you know, from, from, you know, my thought i- is really not to have this Ad Hoc Group be down, um, you know, somewhat in the weeds of, of how the, the city is operating and the services, it's, it, um, that we're procuring from our partnering agencies, but more at a policy level of, you know, this is the direction we're going, i- is, is there, do we still want to, to head that direction? Or is, or is there a reason, uh, for us to consider, uh, moving in a different way? Because a five-year plan, um, i- i- it's, 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 on some level, it's a, it's a commitment of time and, and, and goals for five years. You know, I will add that, um, as we mentioned at the last city council meeting, uh, and during the, the, the mid-year budget update, we're also planning to come with an update on that plan. Um, and so, uh, there are some regular check-ins that were intended to have into the future um, as it relates to this issue, so that, um, the council and the community can know what progress is being made. Uh, because I think objectively, you know, while we're, we're, the overarching goal is functional zero of homelessness, um, we all know that homelessness is increasing over the last a couple of years, um, and that's, um, and so, um, the, there are things that have changed.
And I would say that to not muddy it up, I would want, like, what you just said is what I wanted to have presented and move forward with. So if there is any other alternative, then compare that alternative to the city manager's presentation. Do not bring me in. You're taking what was just said by the city manager, and now you're saying, you're comparing every new idea to what he just said, not mine. For a vote. And it's simple as that. Not me, what he just explained.
Want to say anything else?
I, I would, um,
Go against the city manager, not me. I'm going for that, what he just explained.
Well, it does make a difference if you
I'm going with what he's saying.
Councilmember what, you're the one that approached him. Mayor Protem, and then, uh, Councilwoman Olivia Valentine.
No, what, what I was going to tell, uh, Eric, for example, he mentioned something about but the thing is, we want to be transparent. Whatever we do to help the homeless. Regardless if I'm the, uh, Ad Rock Committee or the Homeless Task Force, that we all have to be in the same pace of this issue, because it's a critical issue. So we have to be transparent regardless policies that we're gonna do is going to be transparent any, anyway, and if we don't get it from the expert, we fail. Because like I said, politicians, it's, don't, don't know how to do all these good policy when it comes to help people directly, especially the homeless, that we do not have the magic key. It is a team effort that it go beyond our borders.
Councilwoman Valentine?
Alright, so, um, I agree with both of you. But the, the way I see it, um, I agree with the concept of the Ad Hoc Committee. But I also agree with the Ma- Mayor Protem that the Ad Hoc Committee needs to have the benefit of the, the, the uh, operation that's already has been done on the ground, so that they have the benefit of knowing what the experts are saying in order to be able to create their good policy. So that's what I, that's how I would, that's how I see it.
Then why don't we why don't we, why don't we ask the Ad Hoc Committee to see what the parameters or the participation of those uh, members that would have constituted the Ad Hoc Committee? We can go back to them and ask them what they feel the parameters would be. Councilwoman Valentine?
You guys make, making this Ad Hoc Committee that difficult? I'm telling you to have empathy for your residents. For your residents. Council, I don't have, I can't Our meetings a joke, this is a joke. I don't care that you say you have the floor.
And you're not following
Unrespectful to the chair.
Alright, yes, you're interrupting too many times. Do you understand that? You can't be interrupted.
It's recorded.
Just because you're not necessarily getting your way, does not mean you have to
I don't, it's for the community. If it gets passed, that's all I care about. It's happy. I'm agreeing.
This is becoming personal on your part, so we need to take that out of here.
The residents of Hawthorne
We have That are might be different figures on addressing the issue, correct?
For the city, I'm happy with. I reset it.
I'm going to recess the minute, meeting for five minutes. Recess.
And cancel the committee? And cancel the committee?
Over a committee?
Protocol where there's no interrupting, whoever has a floor has a floor until they finish their comments. Refrain from uh, personal attacks. Or attacking the person or commenting on the person. Just uh, discuss the ideas and debate the issues. Alright. We'll open up the discussion again on item number thirty-two. Go ahead. Who wants to start?
So, I'll start. By basically just getting this committee set for the residents, I don't care how it's structured. Just as long as the city wins and the residents win. You guys wanna structure it? By all means. However, you guys deem best the way to have this set up, as long as the residents themselves. Get this chance to help build our city. So I'm that, I just want it to be set for the benefit of our residents. I don't care how you guys wanna structure it. Who said what, under whose name, because that's exactly what's going on. It's all about, I, I'll give it to all of you. I'll give it to every si- you guys made the idea. You guys did it yourselves. I had nothing to do with it. Is that better? Is that will now make you guys move on some, I'm not finished yet. Then we just, you just went through the rules of decorum.
I'm asking.
It is because I'm trying to, I, I, I'm not done with my statement. I'll ask you when I'm ready for your question. And I'm just trying to, because I'm trying to fight for the resident. And for a council member to give up every little thing for it. I don't even wanna be placed on the policy. I don't even, do not even say my name as, even bringing it up, erase my name from bringing it up tonight. If this is what would make you guys happy, to just have this move forward, I don't care how it's structured. The way Alex, my, 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 Alex Montero, how he said it, how Olivia Valentine, how she brought it up, how Eric brought it up. Even yourself, Mayor Vargas, however you guys wanna structure it. I don't care, as long as the community gets it. I really don't care. I don't exist. How's that? I don't exist. Amongst yourselves, structure it. And I will vote on that way, as long as we have a committee. And I don't even ask, I don't wanna answer any questions. Because I'm giving you four. You four. Complete control of how this committee is set. I will advertise that you four structured it. You guys did it on your own. I'm okay with that. Because the residents win. So do not ha- I don't exist right now. Structure it, take everything. You guys did it. I'll promote that you guys did it. I just want the residents to have something. That's all. I'm not even gonna ask any questions because I don't exist. I don't. So with that, I release the floor and vote how you guys structure it.
Anyone else? Are we voting on this uh, to the chair? I'm asking if anybody else is making any comments.
The only thing I leave off with is we vote on something tonight. Something.
Uh, to the chair?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Okay, so. My recommendation is, okay? Let, I'm gonna give another directive for Eric and city man, a city attorney. To work on something and bring it back to us. Because like Mr. Haidar said, we're all on this together. We have to be a team effort to deal with homeless issue. It's not just one person. It's all of us in this together. The city, the county, the state, the federal government. The homeless themselves, because they were, they have a voice on this. So we need to hear from everybody. So Eric and Russell, since you guys know best. About ad hoc and the homeless task force, so you guys come up. With a new idea or new policy and bring it to us. Okay, so, so this conversation could end it because apparently, you know, it's on impasse. But people don't understand that we all on the same pace. We only wants to help the homeless and listen to the residents. And that's what we've been doing. Okay?
Item number thirty.
What was the directive?
Elected official reports and recommendations?
No, what was the directive? Was there one? Did we vote on what uh, Mayor Potem Montero, City Attorney, can you explain what just happened?
Uh, City Attorney, uh.
Yeah, maybe um, you. Because I, I got gathered from what uh, Mayor Potem said was he is directing staff to study it and bring it back. For a detailed report. Uh, because everything that you all said is uh, is fine. But the devil is in the details and we have to put this together. You know, after re-listening to the tape, because there are many ideas that were uh, discussed uh, in the past fifteen, twenty minutes.
Thank you.
Is that the, is that the directive?
I'm still confused. So it's brought, it's being brought back for a?
Just for us to actually put a detailed uh, policy together, what everybody just.
Okay.
Okay? Is that, is that okay? Would anybody like to vote on that?
Not, if there's.
If we need to vote on it to make it um, cement it?
Does anybody?
Vote with. Is there, yeah, is anyone against idea?
There is no policy, it's just.
The city attorney is asking you, mayor, is anyone against? The directive that the mayor Potem gave of having himself and the staff draft a policy with details.
That's.
For us to look into.
That's.
Right, so he's asking, is there anyone against it? Yes or no? Okay, thank you. So it's in the concurrence, we'll move forward with that and we'll bring it back.
Item number thirty-three.
Great, we got a full on.
Reports and recommendations. Go ahead, uh, Mr. Uh, City Treasurer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. I just wanna thank the community for coming out and making their voices heard. Uh, the only way that we can serve the communities by knowing what the community, what's important to the community. Um, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, City Clerk, uh. Jimas, are you, are you there?
Yep, this will be quick. Um, so I wanna thank everyone for watching from home and I just have one update regarding the census. So we're eight days away from the deadline. Um, our response rate is at about sixty-five point five, meaning that we're close to seventy percent. So let's try to get there. Uh, please ask everyone, uh, everyone that's watching, please ask your family, your friends. Uh, who live in Hawthorne to respond to the census. Um, and then just I wanna take some time to recognize Ruth Bader Ginsburg for all she did for our nation. Uh, may we never forget what she did for us and especially for women in our country. Uh, so thank you again for watching uh, our council meeting tonight and stay safe out there. Thank you.
Alright, uh, I'm going to ask Councilmember Watt.
Thank you. I just wanna thank the residents for coming out and um. Watching our meeting, um. Giving enough care into your community to voice it. Uh, and then I'll just end with. One last little question, just to make sure it was. Understood, at least on my end, so I don't look foolish later on. Um. Mr. City Attorney, so the ending result uh, is that there was concurrence for, as a directive for staff. To move forward, bringing a policy for us to look at with the details, whether or not. We vote on this one, for that kind of policy to implement in the city, correct?
Yes.
And with that, um, I finish my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Watt. Um, I'm going to ask uh, Councilmember Mike Haida.
Boy, what a, quite a meeting. Yeah, you know, there's a lot of uh, things said tonight from all sorts of different corners. That um, the bottom line is that we have a, a serious problem with homeless. It's not gonna go away. Redondo Beach has implemented uh, um. A, an idea that I think they're gonna go with, and I think that Hawthorne might wanna take a look at that. The problem. May or may not be adding another group, but finding a location to start our own homeless shelter. And that would probably go a long ways to um. To help out and um, and maybe take a look at what Redondo uh, is doing. And see if we can do uh, something similar. I like the idea of uh. Community gardens. I don't know. Uh, the rest of it, if that uh, would work or not. But I, I like the idea of getting people and kids and stuff like that involved in gardening and beautifying uh. Patches, uh, uh, freeway maybe that are, could use it. I got a lot to think about uh, tonight, uh, where I would fit best. Yeah, but, you know, we'll see what comes up from the city manager and the, and the, and the uh. City Attorney's office. But yeah, it was uh, quite a meeting tonight, but that's it for me.
Okay, I'm going to ask uh, Councilwoman Valentine.
Oh, thank you. Um. So, um. I just have, I have a couple of announcements uh, about projects going on in the area. County of Los Angeles is about to launch a Department of Aging and Disabilities initiated by Supervisor Janice Hahn. Um, I have to comment that Supervisor Hahn is always on the ball. She always initiates so many things. You may agree or not agree with her. But she um, she's, she's very creative and she uh, she's um. It's her initiative to launch a Department of Aging and Disabilities. Um, they feel like this is going to centralize services for older adults. So the public will know where to go and seek services because right now the services are scattered among many organizations. And communication is poor as to how to locate those services. Obviously, because of budgetary constraints, this is going to be delayed somewhat. So it's probably one or two years from being launched, but it will happen. Um, and uh, I'll keep you up to date as I find out more information. I'll let, I'll let uh, the council know and I'll let the public know. Um, the South Bay Council of Government has launched something which I think is excellent idea is called Home Share South Bay. In partnership with Silver Nest. So the goal is to pair homeowners. Who want to share their dwelling, say someone who has a large house and who may be an older adult and they don't. You know, they don't need all that space. So they're looking to share their dwelling with someone who's looking for a roommate. And it seems to be a really attractive program, especially for older adults. Who um, as I said, who may have a large house, but they may be cash poor. So maybe they're looking to have a rental income. Silver Nest will do a background check on the renter and collect rent in exchange for a five percent monthly fee. It seems like a win-win situation. And um, I asked the public to please contact me if you're interested. Because I will contact, I will connect you with the South Bay Cog. And as soon as I receive a flyer, I will ask that it be put on our website. So I'm very um, very enthusiastic about that program. Um. So I want to, again, I want to thank the people of uh, the people who, of Hawthorne who came out. Uh, with good intentions, who, who are interested in trying to solve the problem of homelessness in our city. And um, I certainly do want to find a way to, to. You know, not throw away the baby with the bathwater. We've already done a lot of good work. And um, obviously, whatever more info, whatever more. Uh, whatever additional information we may need to inform any new decisions we made. I'm always open to the idea of bringing in new ideas and new um, and new input. I just have to comment on all of the people who are criticizing. Our police department for what they do. The police department has been a very important part of our task force, our homeless task force. And um. Whatever we do, we couldn't do it without them. Um, I, I, I fully support the efforts of our police department. And their, their membership and their participation on our task force to uh, to help end homelessness in the city. So um, again, whatever we've done in the past, we can always improve on. But I have no complaints about any of the policies and procedures we've implemented uh, up to now. So, that's all I have. Everyone have a good week and stay safe.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Mayor Potem, Alex Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, again, um, I have to say, you know, uh, a very good. Spirit of debate, democracy in action. Uh, I wanna commend all those uh. Residents who came and spoke about the, their compassion. Uh, for, for the homeless. And that is what, you know, we are here, you know, to create solution. And to get everybody working together to solve the issue. Because like I said, it's not just one juris disc, it's not just us against the world, but it's all of us together. That's the way we're going to help the homeless, right? Because I said, you know, we, as a human being, we have to offer a hand. To another human being to help them out. So that's what we're here for, to help and to listen. And to be educated on all these issues. So I, I commend all of those uh, uh. More than sixty, sixty comments that we have tonight. So I appreciate all of that. I wanna thanks um, Dulce and Danielle to bring, bring about the gardening and art. Because like I said, you know, those are two therapeutic uh, things that maybe everybody should be doing, gardening and art. Everybody should be involved on to doing that. Um, and, and I look forward that the day that we will have some. Beautiful ramps on the freeways that have community gardens, because we need more, like I said, we need more green space in, in the city. Again, I just like Ms. Valentine said, you know, uh, we have our departments. They're all working to serve the people of Hawthorne. So, and we are here to support them. And to make sure that the service is delivering uh, on, on an effective way and, and transparent. So that is what Hawthorne is all about. Uh, we are here for the community and we are here to, to serve the people. And to make sure that our staff is delivering uh, the goals and objectives that we set up for. Um, I wanted to actually ask, um, I don't know, Russell. Uh, to bring us a memo, a confidential memo about the street vendors. Can you remember how the, the state uh, give them the green light about, you know, selling stuff on the street?
Yes.
I wanted to see what we have in the books, compare what the, what, what the health department and the state and the county. Uh, how we going about, because there is a lot of complaint out there about these street vendors, okay?
Yeah, a- as of right now, yeah, as of right now, very few people have applied for the street vendor permit. You're operating without the permit, so it, they are gonna be subject to citations.
Yes, please, yes, because we need to, we need to take control of the, on that one. Uh, the other thing that uh, I would love, and Dr. Jimenez brought it up. If we can adjourn this meeting, you know, uh, in memory of uh. Ruth Bader Ginsburg, because like uh, she was a, basically, you know. A great woman, a great justice that we have lost. Uh, and um. And her legacy would, would be forever remembered about, you know. And her legacy would, would be forever remembered above, you know, giving rights, voice to the women's and their cause and civil rights. On, on her own way. So. I would love for us to join the meeting on her, on, on her memory, okay? Thank you.
A- any go-bags from anybody? Okay. So, um, I wanna also commend, uh, Dulce Stein and Danielle Marquez on their efforts. With the art show, Art at Home Art Program. Um, we should be able to see some, uh, episodes coming up real soon. I think possibly starting in as early as October. So there's a lot of great ideas. And, uh. I thi- I think I asked Danielle, uh, I guess when I talked to her about it. Um, maybe you could consider doing some, uh, art. Arts and crafts from maybe Mexico or Nigeria or some of the communities that are represented in our neighborhood, because we have a lot of, uh. Different people from different backgrounds and different cultures here within the city. So it'd be great to kind of see some typical arts and crafts being assembled by. Art, local artists and presented on TV. So I think that's, uh. That would be something fun and interesting to be able to see. So. Um, they did have a fundraiser to be able to, um. Give a stipend to the different. Artists that are presenting on the show. And, uh, other council members have donated. Uh, I donated as well. Um, and, uh, I wish we still had the, uh, stipends available. I would have given money for more stipends, but I think, uh, since the COVID-nineteen situation. We earmarked that for, uh, helping out the community. So. That's no longer there. So if any of my fellow, other fellow council members are able to. Uh, are able to assist in however they can. Uh, please, uh, do so. So thank you again, Dulce. Thank you again, uh, Danielle. So, uh. I really appreciate everybody for coming here and expressing their views. Um, ultimate with regards to homelessness and any other idea that's here. I think, uh. If we really think about it. We all want the same thing. We all want to solve this problem with homelessness and a lot, a lot of the other problems that exist in our community. And, uh. Sometimes there's not just one solution. Sometimes there's, uh, multiple solutions. And I feel that a lot of the members of our city council are passionate about that. About their ideas and they've thought it out and. So when it, when we're so passionate about something and we're all so eager about, uh, resolving it and solving it. You know, uh. Sometimes the ideas seem to conflict, which is not the case. Ultimately. Every single member of our city council wants the same thing. Every single member of the city council has done their part. To be able to address the homelessness issue. By the mere virtue of having created the homeless task force in, uh, itself. Which was created in twenty seventeen. I believe, uh, Councilwoman Valentine and Councilmember Hidal Awad were, uh, were. Well, of course you were here at that time and I was here as well. So that's something we, we did. Together and the previous members of our city council. So, that's not, that's not a small thing. That's not like we haven't moved anything forward. That's a great thing. Because if you guys are, uh, if guys don't realize. For a time, we were the only city in the South Bay to actually have. A task force or any type of, uh, city-sponsored entity addressing the homeless issue. City of Inglewood follows suit a little bit later, but just with the homeless services coordinator. And the beach cities have. One coordinator that coordinates for all of the beach city. We have a homeless task force that. Has a homeless service coordinator. Uh, has a, like, full-time mental health expert on board. So that's something we've done as a city. And then we also have the code enforcement. And we do have police that, and other city departments that also participate. All the major departments within the city are represented in. So the city has done something and we've all been part of it. So I commend my fellow city council members. Kudos to all of us. Uh, we all want the same thing. And we all are moving in that direction. So I'm looking forward to the results of that, uh. The report and the advice given to us by our city manager. And our. City attorney. And the reason why homelessness is very personal to me. Is because of, I teach, I teach, let me put this away. I teach at. The jails, the county jails, and I teach adult inmates. I teach math and science. So when I go there. You would expect, okay, who are these individuals? Where do they come from? How do they get into this situation? Very easily. One-third to one-half of the individuals there. Are homeless. They do not have a home. They go out. And stay with friends, stay in motels, stay in hotels. And the cycle for them starts again. So when they go out, they don't have a place to go. And you hear their stories and you see what kind of things they've been through. And I guarantee you as your mayor, as a teacher, as somebody who's interacting with them for the last seven years. I mean, anybody, whether you're for or against, in the middle. That homelessness. Is not a choice. It's not a choice. There are situations and circumstances that befall people that bring them into the situation. And sometimes it's something that you cannot. Get out. That's why we as a city. We as individuals. Need to reach out, need to help. Solve this thing with, exactly, mental health services. That's one of the ideas that have come, come from one of the groups, Street Watch L.A. Good Neighbors, all the different groups that are out there. We know that and we hear you and we recognize that. And finding resources. The reality is that there is a housing shelter. It's a shelter desert here in the area. Okay, when it comes to providing shelter. For the homeless. But it needs to be a regional effort. It cannot just be Hawthorne. So I. Believe and I give weight also to the fact that we need to work, all, all the South Bay city need to come together to provide. The necessary shelter to provide these individuals. It doesn't fall all on Hawthorne because this issue crosses all of the whole of the South Bay. So. Everything that everybody's saying I hear, uh, Councilwoman Valentine, Councilmember Awad, Mayor Potem Montero. Councilmember Mike De La. Everything's valid. There's a different facet that everybody's addressing that's adding to the solution for this problem. Okay? So I think we need to celebrate that. We also need to celebrate the fact that we've created veterans housing as well. For the cities, uh. For, uh, residents of our city who are veterans that need a place to stay. Which. Most of them might be homeless. So we as a city are doing stuff, so. Actually, today's meeting, the, I'm celebrating, I'm celebrating.
Twenty seconds, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'm celebrating it. I commend all of you. And let's move forward with. Helping find a solution to homelessness as a group. Okay? There is one thing, when it comes to ci- decisions here in the city, this is the final thing, Mr. City Clerk. There is no I in team. We all vote on stuff and everything happens because we all vote together and that's how things happen. It's not because one person did this. It's because we all participated and voted to make things happen. So that's it for me. I adjourn this meeting. Everybody have a good night.